Call to order the March 21, 2023, meeting of the North Andover Planning Board. And this may be the last time that I have to read this. All right. All right, pursuant to Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022, this meeting of the North Andover Planning Board will be conducted in person and via remote means in accordance with applicable law. Specific information on the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and a requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town's website at www.northandoverma.gov. For this meeting, in-person attendance of members of the public and board members will be permitted. Members of the public who wish to watch the meeting live may do so on their televisions by tuning to Comcast Channel 8, Verizon Channel 26, or online at www.northandovercam.org. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time by technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post on the town in North Andover website an audio or video recording, transcript, or comprehensive record proceeding as soon as possible after the meeting. If the public would like to attend or participate in public hearings but not attend the meeting in person, please email your question or comment prior to or during the meeting to geneenright@j e n r i g h t@northandoverma.gov. A question or comment will be read during the proceeding and responded to accordingly. And to be clear, both this meeting as well as any public hearings will be in this hybrid fashion that applies to both. Just a, we're going to jump around the agenda a little bit due to different various people's schedules so that we can try to accommodate as much as we can. So I anticipate, I anticipate this being the order. First, we're going to do the discussion item 495 Main Street. Then we're going to do the annual town meeting zoning bylaw, new public hearing, and continued public hearing. Then we're going to do the planning board report. That's where we vote on our recommendations on the bylaws for town meeting, both that are related to the planning board or that we have some say over, and the ones that we are proposing. And then I'm going to go back and do some of the various public hearings, probably the watershed special permits first, and then we'll get into One High Street as well as 495 Main Street. So I know we've had some decent turnout for 495 Main Street. I don't anticipate, we'll get to that till about 7:45 or 8 o'clock, to just plan your, I mean, don't wander because, you know, I can't guarantee it, but just for, for planning purposes.
1:49 Main Street.
I'm sorry, 1:49, thank you. 10 seconds, yes. Thank you.
We could take attendance.
That would be next. Yep.
Okay, Alyssa Koenig?
Here.
Sean Kevlin?
Here.
Eitan Goldberg?
I am here.
John Simons?
Here.
Peter Boyton?
Aye.
And Kelly Comier, remote?
Here.
Okay, 495 Main Street, town in North Andover, request for a waiver of site plan review for the construction of a two-story, 26,000-square-foot classroom addition connected to the existing southeast classroom wing of the middle school. Gene, why don't you tell us what we have here, and then if there's anyone to talk about that, and if we have anything to look at.
Sure. Per bylaw section 195-811(c), the applicant is requesting a waiver of site plan review for the construction of a two-story, 26,000-square-foot classroom addition to the middle school. There are no proposed changes to the internal circulation, local area street network, number of students, public services, and infrastructure, et cetera. Based on the written waiver request and supporting documentation, the board can determine without a public hearing that submission of a site plan review application is not required. So several things have come in since the agenda was posted. Conservation, building, and health have all indicated that they have no comments or concerns with the proposal. DPW operations expressed no concerns. DPW engineering just submitted comments a couple minutes ago that were added to the packet. Essentially, they want to have the drainage infrastructure TV'd prior to any construction, just to assess existing conditions. He thinks there may be some maintenance required that he wants to make sure gets incorporated within the build and permit application. And he will also provide stormwater peer review services for the project. The fire department had requested certain very standard documents, a site safety plan during construction, and like a readiness plan that usually are included in their requests for every application. They've received a sweat path analysis and approved the sweat path analysis.
Oh, that's been approved, okay.
Yeah, he approved it today, and again, his comments are added to the packet, so under department review, you'll see a lot of additional information's been added.
Okay. Anyone to speak on this? Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name's Chris Similes. I'm the project engineer from Brennan Consulting, civil engineer, and we made the application for the request for the waiver of the site plan review in accordance with 195-8.11(c)(1). And basically, we're, it's an extension to the school, two-story, 26,000-square-feet classroom addition. There's no additional students being added, so there'll be no additional trips generated by the site. We're not creating any additional curb cuts along Main or Chickering. And basically, this is to give the students more classroom space is what we're looking for. We set the plan behind you is just to show that we are not requiring, requesting any waivers for zoning. We meet all the setbacks and the height regulations for our zoning district, which is R4 residential. And we've submitted a landscape plan, a drainage utility plan. Well, actually, there's no utilities being used. It's really just a drainage plant. All the utilities, water, sewer, electric, are coming from the main building. So there'll be no additional impact, environmental or otherwise. We're not within any wetland areas. We don't meet any MIPA thresholds. So from environmental situation, there's no impacts. So this is why we felt it was appropriate to request for the waiver.
So the site changes, really, the drive access aisle shifts a little bit closer to Route 125, and a small retaining wall is added.
Correct.
For site improvement.
What's the, so this building is 28 feet, is that what it said?
It's, it's actually 150 by 86 feet, rectangular-wise.
What's the height?
Excuse me?
The height?
It's two stories, 28 feet.
What's the height of the current school at its highest?
The new one will be 28-10, the existing is around 28-27-6.
27-6 on the existing and 28-10 on the proposed.
Okay. That was one question. And so no additional parking, correct?
No.
Not changing the parking. Okay, and these are classrooms, you said?
Classrooms.
Okay.
This is the landscape plan showed here, so they're adding a lot of trees between 125 and the building, and elevations.
So, just sort of an observation first, as I had a few questions, is to put this in context, Gene, correct me if I'm wrong, but if this came up after this year's town meeting, we would have the Dover-type hearing for this, wouldn't we?
Yes, assuming it passed a town meeting, yes.
I mean, that, that's what we would do.
And the Dover bylaw allows for a waiver request as well, based on circumstances.
Okay, okay. My, my, and, I mean, I thank the school committee and the town for coming to us because the last time they didn't, and we have mess in our hands, so glad you came. I do think that we have to do a reasonable degree of due diligence associated with this. I think, you know, we should teach the town fairly compared to what we would do with any other applicant. So if somebody came in for a warehouse of 26,000 square feet, we would beat it to death over three or four hearings. I think we can go faster, but, I mean, we have to make sure that, I think everything we normally cover in a site plan review, we should cover here. And if you don't get answers to things, I don't think we'd grant the waiver until after we're satisfied that we have answers. That's sort of the way I like to proceed. Now, maybe there are no issues, maybe this is completely clean, but I think it's, we should put the same level of scrutiny to this as we do to anything else from anybody, so.
So my thought was, if, if the board does approve the waiver, we could still condition it for all the department heads to sign off on it prior to a build and permit, which they have to do anyways. Peer review, like I said, John Bojazie wants to, wants to examine the existing conditions, and so he would like to do the peer review for stormwater, because he thinks there is something a little bit funky going on in, in one of the catch basins, if I understand right, to the rear. And so he wants to TV it. And again, my thought was, we'd condition, just like we would otherwise.
So, John, I can tell you that my, my original thought was similar, that we should just go through the Dover process, if that's what we're going to do two months from now, or, well, not necessarily, whenever the bylaw is enacted. But looking at the, this actual project, there's no new traffic, right? Because it's, there are no new kids, no new teachers, no new people. It's just an extension of the building, right? It's not higher than anything else, so we're not changing parking, we're not changing traffic flow. I can't, couldn't think of anything that would actually be changed by the project.
Well, that's a little bit, what I was trying to understand a little bit was, you know, exactly where, I'm just trying to get, you know, an exact idea where the footprint is, how does, how far does it move, the...
So why don't we go back to that, just because if it's literally just, right, so we all know that the middle school needs more space, right? That's been, that's obvious.
Well, the argument is that, okay, fair enough, there's not enough space for the number of students there now, so, okay, you could say it's going to be the same number, teaches the same number of students, okay.
Right, so...
Where exactly is it going to be built, and how much is it going to cause the roadway to swing?
The driveway?
The driveway, yeah.
Yep.
So the location is where the existing basketball, like, half-court is, to the, when you're looking at the middle school to the left?
Yeah, okay.
Do you have the dimensions of how far the driveway will shift?
Yeah, the driveway aisle is going to move, the width of the building, which is 150 feet, so what you're looking at, the long axis of the rectangle of the, of the addition is 150 feet. And then there'd be approximately another 20 feet to where you get to the curb line of where the driveway comes out. The driveway is just coming out to go around the building. The driveway is there right now, it's just this is being moved over, away from, from the building. And then the driveway itself is what the existing driveway is, which is 24 feet wide.
Does, does it impact, so at the back of the middle school, go up the hills, and then there are the fields, are any of those impacted?
No, nothing, nothing at all. It's connecting to the same driveway that's there today.
Connect to the same one that goes to the A, B, E, C, C.
Correct.
So how, how close is the nearest part of the driveway to Chikering Road, and how far was it before? I guess I'm just trying to figure out how many feet we moved it.
Yeah, I don't have those numbers exactly on me, but again, I would say that we moved at approximately 200 feet.
200 feet, okay. And previously, the driveway was on level land, Gene, if you can scroll back, the, I take it the driveway was right through where the, like, the middle of where the building is, right?
That's right, yes.
Yeah, okay. So what you got is you got the driveway on the slope, right?
The driveway will be on a slope, but not an egregious slope, 2% or 3%.
Is that 2% or 3%?
Well, after we put the wall in, yes. It's not, it's not, now you're going, shooting uphill yet at that point. You see where the contours are wavering off to the left, now you're going up the hill.
So it's all uphill?
No, more to the left is all uphill. We're, we're still in, in good shape relative to the grade.
Okay. So what's the slope, how much cutting and filling?
The cut and fill is minimal. I mean, we're not cutting really that much into it. It's relatively flat where we are. I haven't done a cut and fill analysis. That's, we get the construction documents for that, but there's nothing that I'm looking at that's making me feel like I'm going to have, like, lots of trucks carting soil off land.
And how big is the retaining wall going to be?
Retaining wall is, we haven't designed that yet, but I would say it's about 100 feet long and about 3, 3 1/2 feet high.
Is the retaining wall where that, like, little rectangular strip is?
Yes, exactly.
Is that, okay.
Which is that?
There's like a little rectangular strip right at the edge there, that's...
Oh, that's it?
Yeah.
That's it. And then once you get past it, it's not required, is that?
No, it's only there to support the grade.
And there's the dimension of 60 feet from the corner of the building, they're showing the 60-foot dimension past that retaining wall?
So the retaining wall is really closer to 50 feet.
Do you see that dimension there, John?
Yeah.
And that's to the building setback, that's not to the roadway?
Correct.
So there's another 15 feet beyond that?
To get to Chikering.
Okay. And what about, how is the drainage going to be handled on the roadway differently, because it's on a slope now?
Really, it's not going to be handled much differently if we go to the, the grading and drainage plan. So in the, halfway through the building at the top of the addition, you see we have a manhole there, and it shoots out, I guess that would be to the west, right, and then down and around into a stormwater retention, detention system, underground, Coltech system, and then back out to where it originally goes today. So really, we're just going around the addition.
Okay.
And any additional flows from, of water from the addition go into the infiltration system, which will recharge the groundwater, so our balancing of stormwater is just as it is today, both rate and volume.
And, well, how does, Gene, how does Joe Borges's concern of drainage fit in with this?
Well, he just wants to camera the existing, so that, you see the top left there, there's existing catch basins that are going to remain. He wants to camera those as well as any existing line.
The one that we're, we're tagging into, in the upper right-hand corner of the, of the system, is the one that Joe had mentioned, that, when we had the TRC meeting.
Yep, so right up here.
So that's, will probably, that structure will probably get replaced, but we need to take a closer look at it, and the video will...
The one other question I have, I'm sort of flipping around in terms of the, you know, the location of the buildings, are, are there going to be any mechanicals on the roof, or is it going to be a parapet? How is that, you know?
Yeah, there'll be a couple of rooftop units on the roof.
I, I, I mean, my concern is...
Can you come up?
Can you go up there and introduce yourself?
There'll be two rooftop units on the new roof to handle just the addition.
Yeah, I, I mean, one of my concerns is, one of the least attractive aspects of the kindergarten is the mechanicals on the roof, and you, you got to do a better job of protecting them and blocking them off from people's view. I, I, you know, I don't know how you're going to do it, but is there going to be some way to mitigate that, or, because, remember, it's going to be higher on the street, and you don't want them looking down right on the roof. I mean, just, I, 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 I mean, remember, it's a prominent location. I mean, on top of everything else, we're going to have to live with that view for 50 years, so, yeah.
Yeah, the units we're using, they're not the huge bus-type units that you probably see on a lot of schools. They're the smaller units because we're handling less square footage there. I mean, we're putting it in the center of the roof, and then it pitches down, there's a small parapet that's around the roof, but obviously, if you're up higher than the roof is, you're going to see, you know, vents and, and things like that. I mean, we can do things, you know, possibly, we can put like a, one of those enclosure fence-type things. We can look at that.
Yeah, I think you, you got to do something, because it's, you know, the, the look and feel of the buildings, of those other buildings, when you come down Chikering Road is, is really not very good, and I don't think it reflects well on our public institutions. And I think we, we need to make that a view that looks attractive. And I think the building itself, from what you've shown, probably is reasonably attractive. I think the middle school's reasonably attractive, but, you know, it, it's going to be that close to Chikering Road, we, we need to have a good view, so, yeah.
Okay, let's take some other questions, comments, Kelly, yeah?
Yeah, absolutely, so thank you. So, very excited about the middle school expansion project. This is much needed, and looking forward to having to be there. A question around the square footage, it's the 26,000 square feet, do we know roughly how many new classrooms that will be?
How many new, we've got eight on the second floor, and if it go down to the other, go up to the top, that's the second floor there, so, pretty sure it's the second. And then there's two, four, six, there's another eight, and then three small group rooms.
Okay, so 16 new classrooms, roughly?
Yes, yes.
A little bit more thereabouts, 16 new classrooms. So just, for the, we have, I just wanted to, I've heard around with parking that there would be no additional parking, so I just want to make sure, so there's 16 kind of teachers that we have in the middle school are ready, that there won't be any new, new hires to support these classrooms, is that true?
As far as I know, I'm not, Jim wants to speak...
Why don't we get the assistant superintendent? He seems like a good person to answer that question.
Thank you.
So we do anticipate some additional staff. I would say no more than 15 staff, new staff. These spaces are going to be new classrooms and allow us to utilize other classroom space for support services that we, we currently put in inappropriate spaces in, in most of our schools. But yeah, there'll be an additional, up to 15 new staff members.
All right, awesome, thank you. So that's, so there's certainly parking, so there will be a few more cars coming in, the 15 for those, for those teachers, and just want to make sure that the parking's adequate for those addition, additional staff members that's there. And that just kind of goes with my thoughts around that, that complex. We've got the middle school, and, you know, several of us, you know, have been traveling in through the new, to the new kindergarten, and in order to get to the kindergarten, the only route is through the middle school. And there's certainly, you know, traffic flow issues that already exist, I really just won't repair those, but would want to make sure with any additional people coming into the school, I mean, those 15 new staff members, that we make sure that any, you know, impact and to the, to those other schools in this complex, that we address those issues if they come up.
So, sorry, a couple of things. One, the, this won't change, we're very sensitive, obviously, to the traffic flow, and this doesn't change it at all, as, as you saw, it just moves the road out. The flow is going to stay exactly as it is, and we do have capacity in the, the lot that is to the, the right, going to the right of the fields. We have plenty of capacity there for, for much more than 15 additional cars. So we're not going to need any additional parking at all.
Jim, tangential question to Kelly's while we have you here. When, let, if this was approved as a, as a waiver, when would construction begin, and what would you, and what, kind of the hours, as well as what would you do to ensure that traffic can continue while construction is occurring?
Right, and part of the, the benefit to all of us, if the waiver is granted, is the fact that we're going to get it out to bid as soon as possible, we're going to award it as soon as we have the funding approved at town meeting, and we want to hit the ground running this summer to get the project started. And that will allow us to really see how things need to flow and prepare us for the start of the school year, so that we have everything in place to manage both construction going on and what we need to do with regards to pickup and drop-off.
Gene, could a, some sort of construction plan and traffic plan be a condition of our, of a waiver?
Yeah, we can make it similar to what we did. We signed fire department and, and building department, and that's what the site safety plan really is. And so, belt and suspender, we can include something, but that's required as part of the site safety plan.
Okay.
It's construction plan, essentially.
Okay, yeah.
And we've had those discussions with both the architect and the project manager regarding what we will stipulate to the general contractor, and how, where they can access, where they can leave, and how they can navigate the site, and when they can as well.
And I just want to make sure that, you know, if, if, if this, I mean, this isn't a small project, it's a large and necessary project, but, you know, Kelly said, if there's people going around the middle school, whether it's for drop-off, or pickup, or sports, or going up to the A, B, E, C, C, or at, consider wherever, that there's adequate plans set in place that that's all going to flow.
Absolutely, and, and our conditions are going to be that they cannot do it while pickup and drop-off is occurring, and then when that's not occurring, here's how they can navigate the site.
Okay.
When you think about pickup and drop-off, do you also include kid stop?
Yes.
Pickup and drop-off, because I know that was a, that's, that was an issue, as a kid stop and drop-off parent at the A, B, E, C, C, that definitely was a challenging time.
Yes, so it's all of the different times for the schools, it's, it's the preschool, and it's kid stop as well, yes.
Awesome, thank you.
Peter, or Sean, or Alyssa, anything?
You asked the question I was going to ask. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm good.
Good, okay.
I, just a little question, lighting?
Lighting's a good question. Yeah, is there any additional lighting from this building, or put up?
We'll have lighting over the, we'll have lighting at the door entries. We're not planning on shining lights out. There will be, I think there's going to be maybe one, one or two street lights, or drive lights, I should say, driveway. But we're still looking at that.
I, I guess, Eton, I feel, in the end, I don't have a problem approving this, but I think we should put in all of our standard conditions and get some of the documents and things at the backend that we normally get in the frontend, because, I mean, let's face it, even lighting, I mean, we drill people on lighting. I mean, you know, and do we want to give the town a pass? Well, we shouldn't. And so before this thing is done, I think we, we need to have that pinned down, but I'm, I'm still okay with approving this, given the circumstances.
Sean, did you have a question or...
Yeah, I just have one question. So, I noticed in the, in the elevations in the design, so there's a science lab and a STEM lab, is there any fume hoods in either the science lab or the STEM lab?
No fume hoods.
Okay.
I love that that's becoming your thing.
That's my thing.
Okay, okay, so, I think we'll make a motion to approve the waiver, and, but, conditions, so are there the ones I was thinking about? Gene, what is the...
So, I would suggest have me draft the decision and, and work with you to make sure it has all, John called it, all the standard conditions, just get them at the backend prior to a build and permit issuance.
Okay, and I just, specifically, I think the things that, that we're going to be looking for are construction plans, safety plans, and adequate screening and appropriate lighting.
Yep.
And obviously, you know, and, and, and stormwater.
Yep.
And so we can put conditions, and then we can build it and go through, and, and if things arise in the field that you see that are different, or if, you know, they don't, it doesn't work out, then we can always come back and discuss it. Okay, so, motion to approve the waiver of a site plan review for the construction of a two-story, 26,000-square-foot classroom addition connected to the existing southeast classroom wing of the middle school. Can we get a motion?
Yeah, I'll make that motion. Subject to the conditions that we talked about.
Subject to conditions. Can we get a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor, Kelly?
Yeah.
Alyssa?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Peter?
Aye.
And I vote yes. Now, that's approved, thank you very much. Thank you all for coming, too.
Thank you very much.
All right, let's do, so we're going to do our zoning bylaws. So we have, Gene, you think, open the new hearings, or do, do the continued hearings first, does it matter?
Continued first.
Okay, continued first. Going to continued public hearing, annual town meeting zoning bylaw amendment articles, site plan review Dover bylaw. Gene, has this been properly noticed? This has been noticed, and we've had hearings already?
This will be your third hearing on this article. You've discussed it previously for, I would say, at least four meetings previously. There's been no amendments since your last meeting, and I've not received, hold on, any public comment.
Okay, is there any members of the public that wish to speak on the site plan review Dover bylaw? I see none. Are there any members of the board that want to speak on that? Nope. Gene, when we close the hearing, I can just close it all together, one, it's one hearing, right?
This one hearing.
This one hearing, I don't have to do it for each bylaw?
No.
Okay, great. Flood plane bylaw, any changes or any comments?
Not, not since your last meeting?
Okay, does any members of the public wish to weigh in on the flood plane bylaw? Okay. Inclusionary housing requirement, any new changes or... Okay. Inclusionary housing requirement, any new changes or comments that have come in?
Note of both questions.
Okay. Any members of the public or board members wish to weigh in on the inclusionary housing requirement bylaw? I see none. Okay. Can I get a motion to close the public hearing as to annual town meeting zoning bylaw amendment articles? The one that was already, that we've already had hearings on? Motion made. Can we get a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor? Kelly?
Aye.
Alyssa?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Peter?
Aye.
And I vote yes. Those public hearings are now closed. I'm now going to open the public hearing with the remote caveat that we heard earlier that this is going to be a hybrid hearing for additional annual town meeting zoning bylaw amendment articles. Those being continuing care retirement center, daycare center rename childcare facility and eliminate special permit requirement, daycare center delete definition, daycare center update table two summary of use requirements to replace daycare center with childcare facility and eliminate the special permit requirement. All right, Jean, has this been noticed in the newspaper?
It has been noticed two consecutive weeks and tonight, as you said, is the opening of the hearing.
Okay. Have you received any comments regarding this?
I have not.
Want to just briefly run through it for us so we have a record?
Sure. So the CCRC proposal, again, I think you've had it two meetings previously. Essentially, what it's, it's a cleanup article for the most part. The wording could be interpreted differently. What it, what it attempts to do is make it clear that if there's an existing CC, continuing care retirement center in town and they find a parcel of land where they'd like to open a second CCRC, they could do so only if it's affiliated with an existing nursing home in the town of North Andover. Okay, so.
Or they could have another nursing home on that site if they want.
They could have it on that site, but at, at a minimum, they'd have to at least affiliate it with an existing one.
Okay. Okay. Anyone have any questions or comments on that? Any members of the public wish to weigh in on the continuing care retirement center? Okay. Daycare centers, tell us about this. So this is in line with the Dover amendment bylaw, correct?
Yep. So in the warrant, as you'll see, they're positioned after the Dover amendment. And the intent is to remove the special permit requirement for daycare use because it is protected under Dover and it's going to follow the Dover process in the future. And so in order to sunset the special permit requirement, there's actually three warrant articles needed to update the table of uses, to remove the special permit language, and to remove the definition because the Dover, the definitions have changed in the Dover statute. And this brings it with the current statute.
And we're keeping the locations, the zoning districts where they're allowed the same, correct?
So I'm glad you said that. So the table of uses is one outstanding issue. And it's not that I'm proposing to do anything different, but what I found was the narrative in the bylaw article didn't always match up with the table. And so I, I made the table match the written narrative in the articles.
Okay.
And so you'll see, if you go to the Osgood, the lower end of the table first, the, the table had a no for the business opportunity zone, I believe it's called. Yet the narrative says they are allowed there. And that would make it consistent with Dover to, to switch the N to a Y.
Okay.
And then the CDD two is the only other example of that. So CDD one, the narrative says no, and the table does. In CDD two, the table says special permit, but the narrative says they're not allowed in CDD two.
So the table never got updated to match the narrative?
Or it was just a mistake over time. The narrative says they're not allowed. It's not a permitted use in CDD two, just like CDD one. But yet the table said it requires a special permit.
So this table matches the text?
The text in the article.
In each, okay, all right.
And, and that being said, CDD zoning district went in well after the requirement of the special permit. So I'm not, I'm not quite sure how that happened, but.
Okay. And I would like to, if we can, next year, to look at the, whether or not it makes sense to still have these as no in CDD one and CDD two and the part of the Osgood. I just don't think, I don't think we've fully had enough time to fully have that discussion, but I'd like to look at that.
Okay.
Because if we can make, I'm not really sure there should be a place in town that, that doesn't allow for a childcare center, but let's, let's do that next year.
Yep. John would probably remember most, but they're right on 114. They're tiny little frontages with very small lots that somebody envisioned.
I think it probably just fell through the radar screen. I think we were looking for uses that were, you know, could exist in small lots. I think part of the idea was that given how narrow the, you know, there wasn't much space between 114 and the end of the properties, that they were going to be small. So the extent we could actually stay in the existing houses and convert them to a business is what we really wanted, so.
Okay, just something I think to look at, just as, as over the last couple of years, we've made changes to kind of adapt and to try to spur growth in that area. So just, I think we should, I think it might just be good to look at the CDDs again and just in general to see what else we can do to kind of continue building off what we've done in the last couple of years. Okay, all right. Any other comments on those? Okay. Seen no public comments. I'd ask for a motion to close the public hearing as to additional annual town meeting zoning bylaw amendment articles. Motion made. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor? Kelly?
Aye.
Alyssa?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Peter?
Aye.
And I vote yes. Those are now closed. Okay. Now we will go to the planning board report. For anyone interested, the planning board report is a document that the planning board produces and actually is required to produce for town meeting where we weigh in on the bylaws that have been come through the planning department as well as any other bylaws that have kind of touch on planning topics. So, and our recommendations, which are just recommendations, go into the report and then get read at town meeting and then the town meeting votes on them. So what we're going to do now is we're going to vote on our recommendations for the various articles. Those, anything we vote on will then also be voted on by the select board in a few weeks.
The select board are scheduled to make recommendations on April 10th and the warrant goes to print on the 14th.
And our options are to recommend favorable action, meaning we think that town meeting should support the article, to recommend unfavorable action, meaning we think town meeting should not support the article. Or if we're not sure, we can just vote now to make a recommendation at town meeting. If we don't really have a, if we don't feel like we want to make a recommendation now or don't have a consensus or just don't want to. Okay. Article three, authorization to accept grants of easements. This comes every year as part of being a town with town meeting. The select board have to be authorized to accept grants of easements. Can we get a motion to recommend favorable action?
So moved.
Second.
And second, and all, Kelly?
Aye.
Alyssa?
Yes.
John?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
And I vote yes. Okay, that's approved. Authorization to grant easements. Can we get a motion to recommend favorable action?
So moved.
All in favor? Kelly?
Aye.
Alyssa?
Yes.
John?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Article 10, land taking for recreational complex. To see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to acquire by purchase eminent domain or confirmatory taking and for a municipal purpose, a portion of land shown on a plan entitled Existing Conditions Plan, Recreation Complex 495 Main Street, North Andover, MA dated December 20th, 2018, prepared by Waterfell Design Group, said plan on file with the town clerk. And being that portion of land approximately shown on said plan locate between an existing fence and the boundary line of land described as NF Michael Silverio, map 44 parcel 61. And being that same land claimed by adverse possession in Michael Silverio versus Town of North Andover. And to authorize the select board to grant and accept title, all easements and claims necessary to develop the property. To see what sum of money the town will vote to transfer from valuable funds to be used by the select board to acquire said property and to take all necessary actions necessary to complete said acquisition. Okay, so this is something that is the subject of litigation currently. So we're not going to get too deep into the weeds in it, but we have asked if town council can just give us a little information about it so that we can just be educated. Good evening and welcome to your first planning board meeting.
Good evening. Nice to, nice to meet everyone. My name is Christine O'Connor. With respect to this matter before you this evening, this is property that is already town property. However, because claims have been made as to ownership through adverse possession, by putting this on the warrant, it puts the town in the position that should it make sense down the road to do what is essentially a confirmatory taking, we would be in a position to do that and reclaim land that has already historically been town land.
So just, so I'm clear, that's an interesting twist, that, do we have like maps, surveys, et cetera, that show that this is town-owned land?
Yes, the, the dispute that, that exists, that has been, and it continues to be litigated. They have looked at maps. There's been extensive research. It is not a, a case that's being handled by, by town council. This was predated my arrival. But that's my understanding that they had in fact done lengthy investigation into whatever information is available, even with respect to aerial views and the like.
I, I mean, the reason why I ask the question that way is I'm not a fan of eminent domain at all. And my initial reluctance was, oh my God, I don't want to deal with that because I just don't believe that. You need to do a lot of due diligence, a lot of openness before that. But it's really not an eminent domain situation as you described it. It's different than that.
I would agree with that. You could think of it more in terms of a confirmatory taking as opposed to an actual taking because the property is, as of right now, still legally town property unless and until someone has proven that they have in fact taken for zero dollars what historically has been town property.
It's literally the, the other person's making an adverse possession claim and that they took property from the town. That's his, his literal claim is that he took property from the town. And this allows us, if it's proved that he took it, to take it back, which we would still have to pay for. Which is, but, but that's what, that's, it would allow us to do that if, only if we really lost.
So not to get in the weeds, but I thought adverse possession didn't apply to taking of government?
Depends on when. So this case, based on my reading of the, I was reading the, the briefs and the filings, it depends on when it happened. So that there was a case in law that happened, but I think this was before.
That, that's right. And that's why the, the research has been so extensive and has had to go back. And, and so in this particular case, they not only have to establish an actual adverse possession, but they have to be able to prove that it occurred prior to the change of law.
And that they had it continuous and open and all the, all the other, and actually, they're very finite, actually. I was reading some of the decisions of the judge, some of which were very favorable to us about the exact timeline. It's, I mean, it's unfortunate that that's where we are with this, where it's, it's about the offense. But it's, it is interesting law. So, but I mean, I think it totally makes sense for us to be supportive of this. Okay, can we get a motion to recommend favorable action?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Kelly?
Yeah.
Alyssa?
Yes.
John?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
And I vote yes. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
You've, you've been lucky. Many previous town councils have been here for many, many a meeting. So it's been a good, big quiet stretch.
Hopefully this doesn't break that streak.
Right, yeah, nobody's been. Cell tower marijuana plant. Okay. Article 12, roadway's acceptance, a portion of Re Street. To see if the land will vote to accept as a public way a portion of Re Street. Is this where the subdivision was?
Yeah, so this likely will be withdrawn, so you can hold off. And if something changes, you still have one more meeting to vote.
Okay then. We'll hold off then. John, report of the Community Preservation Committee, appropriation from Community Preservation Fund. You guys are spending some money here.
We are spending some money.
Continue on tell us about that.
Jean, to, to, to put up that I can?
Yeah, we scroll down.
Is it, is it, okay, that's right. It's a, it's a warrant article.
Yeah, so we have requests for $2,197,864 total for requested projects. So if you could tell us about some of these.
Yeah, I mean, what was interesting this year was that there were quite a few projects proposed. I mean, there really were quite a few in that, you know, these are the ones that we approved and there were several that were not approved. And, you know, maybe that had some merit, but we went back and forth and, and we did not approve them. So the, the first one Peter's intimately familiar with. This is the North Pumping Station and the next phase of that project. So I just mentioned that because that's one of the items. You could see there's quite a few historical preservation projects this year. You know, some refurbishment of Parson Barnard, some historical artifact preservation. It's a lot of the textiles and so forth that they have that if they don't take care of them now, they'll, they'll completely erode. One of the things that I think Jean and Andrew have done in the next one is this dark preservation plan is a, a full inventory of all of our historical sites and locations and everything in town. Next item is Stevens Coles. There's a magnificent ballroom mural that we're helping to refurbish. And then there's several projects related to Ridgewood Cemetery. The second burial ground is actually under the auspices of the Ridgewood Cemetery. Now they're actually managing that and they needed a little bit more money to finish the work. But if you've ever not gone by the first and second burial ground, it's really well worth it to go take a look and to see those things. Let's see. One item is that I think the Stevens Estate, they call it the stables, but it's the carriage house. And CPA had provided a small amount of money for that a number of years ago. And this is an attempt to really completely stabilize it so that we can decide on the ultimate use. And I, I mean, if I were guessing, I think it would be used for musical purposes, like a lot of the youth programs and so forth. So that's pretty exciting. That's the first.
What's the barn at Johnson Street?
The barn at Johnson Street is actually, it's a Ridgewood Cemetery project. Which is actually interesting is that what they did was, you know, they're looking 5,000, 100 years down the road. And so they purchased the property with a barn there. They actually used their own money to buy the property. It was an old horse barn there. And in fact, there's, I actually saw a foal being born on that, in that barn. But it's a beautiful old barn and, you know, it's historically significant. We talked to the Historical Society about it and, you know, basically this is the cost to refurbish that. It'll be used and maintained by, by Ridgewood.
And what's the Zero Bradford Street open space?
Zero Bradford Street is, we're trying to purchase a property. It's basically the property that sits between Mazarenko and Carter Hill. It's like seven or eight acres. And we would then, with that, owning that, we would own completely everything between. That's an exciting project and I think Jean and Melissa took a very active role in that. And, you know, there'll be a lot of back and forth because that's what it appraised at, they want more money. But, you know, I mean, that's, that's the way life is, so, yeah.
And it's in the watershed, so.
It's in watershed, yeah. It's really a pretty significant property. Personally, it's very dear to my heart, so.
John, is there any structures on the Zero Bradford Street?
No.
No, there's nothing there.
It's a wooded lot.
One thing I think that might be helpful is that when you, like, when these projects get done, I don't know if it's, like, is there a website or somewhere where people can see?
There actually is a website that we already have. And one of the things that, you know, with Brian Roach is the chair and there are a couple of other members of the committee. And Jean, you know, I mean, you know, because you, you work with us. They've done a good job of posting a lot of that information on the website. And I think, Brian has done a really good job of putting present, a full presentation for town meeting. I mean, they, he has to go to the select board and he has to go to the finance committee with that, so.
I think, yeah, I think just somewhere where people could, I don't know, see when these things happen, but like stuff that's already been done. It would be good to just have good.
Yeah, it's one of the things that we've, we've done and we've spent a lot of time over the last few years is signage. Because it's kind of one of those things, once I've been on all the properties, we don't want to spend insane amount of money on it either, so, yeah.
Okay, great. Can we get a motion to recommend favorable action?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Kelly?
Yeah.
Alyssa?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Peter?
Aye.
And I vote yes. Okay, very good. All right. Inclusionary housing. Can we get a motion to recommend favorable action?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor, Kelly?
Yeah.
Alyssa?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Peter?
Aye.
And I vote yes, okay, next. Floodplain Amendment, can I get a motion to rec, oh wait, did I miss one?
Nope.
The, okay Jean, so I'm looking at page 13 now, no, 14?
Yeah.
The explanation at the top is Continuing Care Retirement Center?
Yep. Because it follows 13, which is the recommendations, and then the explanation always goes.
So it's continued care next?
No, it's, I'm sorry. So it was inclusionary housing, I'll fix it.
Right.
No, that is the, that is the right, so what the amendment for inclusionary housing is doing is pointing back to the density and payment and lieu calculations for continuing care retirement centers, and it's including subdivisions of land.
Okay, gotcha, okay, all right, all right, all right, that's the explanation, okay.
And so floodplain is next.
Okay, can I get a motion to recommend favorable action on the floodplain bylaw?
Second.
All in favor, Kelly?
Yes.
Alyssa?
Yes.
John?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
And I vote yes, okay. We get a motion to recommend favorable action on the Continuing Care Retirement Center bylaw?
So moved.
Motion made, can we get a second?
Second.
All in favor, Kelly?
Yes.
Alyssa?
Yes.
John?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
And I vote yes, all right. Can we get a motion to recommend favorable action on the Dover bylaw?
So moved.
Motion made, can we get a second?
Second.
All in favor, Kelly?
Yes.
Alyssa?
Yes.
John?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
And I vote yes, Jean, what about the new ones, do we make recommendations on the ones, I didn't see, they're not in the planning board report yet though, right?
Yeah, they are.
Oh, they are?
Go on, so you've already done one of them, which was the CCRC amendment, and now you have the daycare sunset.
Okay, get a, oh, that's all part of them, okay, can I get a motion to recommend favorable action on the daycare center warrant articles?
So moved.
Get a second?
Second.
All in favor, Kelly?
Yes.
Alyssa?
Yes.
Pete, John?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
And I vote yes, okay.
So that you did all three at once?
Yes.
And I would just note that Kelly has made all of her motion, all of her votes remotely.
Okay, so that should take care of the zoning bylaws, the additional zoning bylaws, 495 Main Street and Planning Board Report, is that, I have that right?
Yep.
Okay. Let's do, um... Zero Turn Break Street is requested continuous to April 25th, it's going to be continued until April 25th, continued public hearing, 34 Glenore Circle, David and Mary Ann Sweetser, application for watershed special permit under Article 4, Part 5, and Article 10, Section 195, 10.7 of the zoning bylaw.
So the applicant has satisfactorily responded to the stormwater peer review comments, a revised site plan, and stormwater operations and maintenance document are included in the meeting packet, and a draft decision was prepared for your review.
Okay, anyone have any questions or comments that they want to ask about 34 Glenore Circle?
Project engineers here, if you have questions.
Anybody have any questions or comments? Okay, can we get a motion to close the public hearing, or sorry, sorry, any member of the public that wished to weigh in on this pool, paper patio, and fence, no, I'm sorry, pool with an enclosure patio, demo deck, struck new deck, fire pit, okay, no public comments, no questions or comments from the board, can we get a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor, Kelly?
Yeah.
Alyssa?
Yes.
John?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
And I vote yes, that public hearing is now closed, we'll review the draft decision. And Jean, we did look at water testing for this, correct?
You did, yeah.
Is that, is that finding a fact somewhere?
I have not included them.
Could we, could we, not necessarily the actual, I don't know that we need the actual data, but the fact that we looked at data in that area, I think should be an important finding of fact.
I'll just add on the first page, I had highlighted Kelly's name, but Kelly was here for this portion of the hearing, she did leave early, so I'll take, remove that highlight.
Okay, and just adding a finding of fact that we reviewed lake data in the area where this is being proposed.
About water quality data.
Water quality, yeah, thank you. Can we get a motion to approve the watershed special permit for 34 Glenore Circle?
So moved.
Motion made, can we get a second?
Second.
All in favor, Kelly?
Yeah.
Alyssa?
Yes.
John?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
And I vote yes, okay, that is approved. New public hearing, 521 Dale Street, Anthony and Lindsay Solis, application for watershed special permit under Article 4.
I'm going to recuse myself because I got a butter notice, so it's close to where I live, so I'll just assume pass.
Okay, thank you, John, application for watershed special permit under Article 4, Part 5, and Article 10, Section 195, 10.7 of the zoning bylaw, to authorize installation of an in-ground pool, paper patio, and fence within the 325-foot non-discharge zone of the Water Protection District, the property is located in the R1 residential zoning district. Sean, you're tagged in for this, as a permit, okay?
Okay, so the applicant has responded to the stormwater peer review comments and has submitted a revised site plan to address comments regarding erosion control, stockpile location, and construction access location. The O&M plan has been revised to include inspection and maintenance schedule for the non-backwash filtration system. It has also been updated to specify that in the event excess water needs to be removed from the pool, it will be pumped into a stone infiltration trench after stormwater events. Final sign-off of the stormwater peer review that was received on 3/16, final sign-off was received on 3/16, if time allows, I'll draft a decision, which I've done, the packet includes water quality testing from nearby Foamy Brook from January of '23, so this data is more updated than the one you've looked at for the last two applications.
Great.
Total phosphorus readings compare favorably to the Table 6.7 of the Lake Chicago Total Phosphorus Sampling Results from 1986 and 2021. I'll say the stormwater review, I was able to draft a decision because there was a handful of very, very minor comments that came back, and all of which were responded to.
Okay, hi.
Good evening, Thor Akerly, wetland scientist and registered sanitarian with Williamson Sprages, representing Anthony and Lindsay Solis, the property owners.
Okay, you want to tell us what you're doing?
Sure, this is the proposed installation of an in-ground pool, roughly 550 square feet, in addition, a chain-linked fence around the pool to meet building code, and then a privacy fence along two sides of the property for just protection from view from Dale Street for use in the backyard for their kid, you can see there's a little bit of a site, direct site to the back of their property from Dale Street, that's the reason for the privacy fence. The pool patio, pool patio is entirely proposed around the pool, I believe it was about a six-foot offset around the pool, and that patio is proposed to be bordered by a one-foot wide, two-foot deep stone infiltration trench that'll provide about 280 cubic feet of storage, so we're compensating up to the 100-year storm with that. Otherwise, work includes a concrete slab for the pool equipment, and I believe that is, that is everything, we show construction access, erosion controls, and the pool itself is just about 240 feet from the wetland across Dale Street.
Uh, what's there in the area now, is that just grass?
It's all lawn, they don't anticipate any removal of vegetation as part of this project, we show the edge of disturbed on the plan there, to the left of the home, and then off the back as well, we don't anticipate, or they don't anticipate removing any, any trees as part of this project.
Okay, good, that was my next question, okay, that's all I got, anybody else?
So I think it was important to note that the wetland is actually across Dale Street, on the other side.
Okay. Any members of the public have any comments on the Solis's pool request? Seeing none, Jean, have you received any comments?
I have not.
Okay, can I get a motion to close the public hearing? Now, look at you, getting in, right in there, all right, can we get a second?
Second.
All in favor of closing the public hearing, Kelly?
Yeah.
Alyssa?
Yes.
Sean?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
And I vote yes, okay, let's review. Again, Jean, we had a finding of fact that the planning board has reviewed lake water treatment data.
Yep, and I'll strike John Simons and Ed Sheen.
Yep. Can we get a motion to approve the watershed special permit for 521 Dale Street? Motion made?
Second.
Second, and all in favor, Kelly?
Yeah.
Alyssa?
Yes.
Sean?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
And I vote yes, it's approved, thank you. So we want to get John? All right, let's do, we'll do 14th, 2nd, and 149th Main Street now, all right, Continued Public Hearing, 14th, 2nd, and 149th Main Street, 802, that's pretty good, 14th, 2nd Street, and 149th Main Street, 2nd and Main LLC, application for a site plan review, parking, inclusionary housing requirement, downtown overlay district special permits under Article 8, supplemental regulations, Part 1, off-street parking and loading, Part 3, site plan review, Part 13, inclusionary housing requirement, Article 18, downtown overlay district, Part 1, Article 10, administration of the North End of a zoning bylaw. The applicant proposes redevelopment of the property into a mixed-use development contained with a single building, including ground floor commercial space along with two floors of residential units above the first floor. Total of 24 residential units are proposed, along with parking, landscaping, lighting, and other improvements to be located on a single lot consisting of approximately 28,559 square feet, but combining parcels known and numbered as 149th Main Street and 14th 2nd Street, property is located within the general business district and downtown overlay district. 2nd and Main, okay, Jean, want to tell us where, so this is our, this is our third public hearing?
I think fourth.
Fourth, okay, third, our fourth public hearing, where are we at since last meeting?
It's actually the fifth.
Fifth, okay.
December 20th, February 7, 28, March 7, and March 21.
Okay, where are we at since the last meeting?
So no new information has been submitted, I carried the final traffic parking assessment, stormwater review, and the plans to this meeting packet, I've not received, let me check my email, I've not received any additional comments.
Okay.
A draft decision was prepared at your request.
Okay, so what we'll do is, we'll hear from the applicant, if there's anything else that you wish to add, if the board has, I think then we'll go into any public comments right from there, and then if there's any questions or comments, we'll jump into them. Okay, Attorney Smolak?
Mr. Chairman, other members of the board, John Smolak with Smolak and Vaughn, representing the applicant, 2nd and Main, with me this evening are representatives of Langin Engineering as well as JTA Architects, and specifically Hillary Holmes is to my left, who's here to discuss a little bit about our review of the common boundary between the site and 159 and 161 Main Street, which was requested for us to take a look at that and see if there are any alternatives that could provide greater separation in that area, and so with that said, I turn the discussion over to Hillary Holmes.
Okay.
Walk you through a few things.
Hi, Jean, is there any way we could pull up the presentation from the last hearing? Hillary Holmes with Langin, civil engineer, we just wanted to review, at the last hearing, we had presented a section view of the wall at the common boundary, and we had discussed what the proposed design was in terms of the dimensions of the wall from the boundary, as well as what that wall would look like, and then the dimension from the fence to that boundary, so we just wanted to go into a little bit more detail on some of the research we had done, looking into that further, so if you could go to slide 13, I believe. Yeah, go up, yes, so this one, so if you zoom in a little bit in the top, we have one, that would be great, so this is a section looking through the wall and the butter at 159th Main Street, and it shows the retaining wall and the fence on top of the wall, we have five feet from the face of the wall on the parking lot side to the property line, which at 159th Main Street is actually at the face of the building, so at the last hearing, we had discussed, you know, that wall being a large gravity block wall, and in terms of, you know, the maximum distance we could get from the face of that wall to the property line, and, you know, we confirmed that, you know, the max we can get with this type of wall would be three and a half feet from the face of that fence to the property line, and that's based on, you know, our research and our discussions with the wall block manufacturer, and the fact that that post needs to, the size of the post, and, you know, how it needs to be embedded into that type of block wall, so we did look at, you know, other alternatives, you know, could we do a different type of wall that we, where we could try to increase that distance at all, and one of the options we looked at was a cast-in-place concrete wall, where you could embed the post in that concrete wall, the issue with a concrete cast-in-place wall is that we would have to have a footing that would go down an additional four to five feet from our finished grade of the parking lot, the nice thing about the gravity wall that we're proposing is it has minimal embedment from finished grade, it's one or one and a half feet, because you're relying on the weight of the blocks itself to retain the soil behind it, whereas if you're doing a concrete cast-in-place wall, you have to, you have to have a four to five feet deep footing, so from a constructability standpoint, that's not really feasible here given the constraints of our site. We also looked at some other alternatives in terms of moving that fence post, instead of in the wall, could we put it and embed it in front of the wall, like into the parking side, and one of the challenges with that is now your post is within your parking space itself, and it poses, you know, a condition where those posts have to be spaced every eight feet, it could be a maintenance issue, cars, you know, if cars hit the posts, one other thing to consider is at the highest point for the wall, it's five feet, and we're proposing a six-foot fence on top of that, so if you embed the post on the parking lot side, you would have to have an 11-foot tall post, and there's considerations in terms of wind load on that post, as well as, you know, the overturning moment, you know, the desire for that post to want to, you know, overturn, so that did not seem to be a viable alternative either, so we did look at those couple of options, and we came back to the, what we're proposing is really the best option, we believe, for the site.
Just one item to add, as well as as you're looking at this elevation or cross-section, keep in mind that the wall is going to be about the same elevation as the adjacent residential property, so basically all we're talking about is the, is the fence that folks will actually visually see from, from the house, but when we, when we also took a look at, and we are at the site measuring, the six-foot wall, the six- and we are at the site measuring, the six-foot wall, the six-foot fence came just about at the bottom of the window of the first floor. So, so we don't think that's going to be an impediment to views. I mean, we could go higher if folks want it, but we have to be careful in terms of how high we go, for the reasons that were mentioned by Hillary.
Were there any additional discussions with the butters about these options and why they weren't viable?
We didn't have those discussions because we couldn't come up with an alternative solution that would be better than here. We, I communicated with the owner of 159. I sent an email and mentioned that we weren't able to come up with a better solution, and I had assumed that that had been carried over to the owners of 161 Main. I assumed that they had gotten that, but I didn't have that email. But, but there wasn't anything that could be done as an improvement.
Right. No, I understand. I just wanted to note, so that they knew in good faith that you had made an effort and there was a discussion there.
Okay. Any question or comments for members of the board, but really anything before we go to public comments?
I appreciate you following up on those questions.
Okay. Thank you, Peter. All right. Any members of the public wish to make any comment or ask any questions, now would be the time.
Hi, my name is Liesel McGregor, 161 Main Street. We were never told of any changes, nothing. Nobody reached out to us, nothing. So we knew nothing about any sites they looked into. We didn't even see anyone on the site. So.
Okay. Thank you.
But I will mention also that we were out of the site with the McGregor's at the very beginning, and described the fence and the screeding and so on. And that hasn't changed from what we had communicated at that time.
I have received public comment when you're ready.
You have received public comment. Okay, well, let's go through, let's go through everyone who's here first. Anyone else that's here, and then we'll take that. Sir?
Good evening. I'm Kim Azvardian with Tep LLC. I'm a transportation engineer. The church is retained to look primarily at parking. I prepared a memorandum. Would you like me to provide it for you?
I would have liked to have seen it before the meeting.
It was done, it was done in photo finish fashion. Well, I'll describe it, if that's okay.
Do you guys want to take it?
I would like to take it, yeah.
Okay. Well, we can take it.
Thank you.
So I think this is likely the email that I just received. I can download it.
Is the email in the, in the folder yet, Jeanne?
No, it's literally just getting it out of my email.
Okay.
I'll download it and display it here, and I'll save it.
Thank you.
I'll put it in the public comment packet, Kelly, if it's easier for you.
That'd be awesome. Thank you, Jeanne.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
I reviewed the Langen revised parking and traffic analysis, and as part of that review, I conducted parking demand calculations using the Institute of Transportation Engineers' Parking Generation Manual, the same reference that the applicant used. I calculated values for parking demand using a different, using the same land uses, but different independent variables and different, different values for peak parking demand, and I summarized the analysis in, in Table 1. Now, essentially, the numbers that I got were higher than Langen's numbers. If you look at the, the bottom line of Table 1, you can see that Langen got a sum of 39 vehicles for parking demand on the weekday at peak time. If you look at the peak time for the residential and commercial uses at the same time, and 51 on the Saturday. And if you look at the line above that, that's kind of a summary average, and the numbers are generally higher. Second component, St. Gregory personnel observed parking on three days, Sunday, March 12, Friday, March 17, and Sunday, March 19. And in very brief summary fashion, all the Main Street parking near the St. Gregory site did fill up at times. All the, all the parking on the St. Gregory site did fill up at times. Up to 16 vehicles parked on the project site, 149 Main Street, and up to three peoples parked on, three vehicles parked on the former Bank of America site, which is at 154 Main Street, and up to 12 St. Gregory-related vehicles parked on the St. Michael's site. My comments in summary fashion, the applicant should consider additional parking demand calculations similar to what's shown in Table 1. They should review my work and, and do their own work as well with it. The applicant should more specifically consider Sunday parking conditions and demand. I'm representing the church. I'm not looking at, at overall conditions in the area so much as I'm looking at impacts on the church. And Sunday is, is the church's busy day, obviously. In the analysis, vehicles that park on the project site will be leaving the project site, and they very likely will end up on a Main Street. So any reserve capacity left on Main Street will be partially used up by those vehicles that are now on the, on the Santander site. Parking on the Bank of America site at some point in the future could leave that site and end up on-street, using up more on-street parking supply. Parking on the St. Michael Parish site is subject to availability. There might be times when it's not available, and I don't know that it's available in perpetuity. And that could lead to off-street parking demand in the future. And even if some parking spaces on the streets in the general area remain unoccupied, the applicant should assess whether an adequate supply of off-street parking will remain close to, let's say, within 200 feet of the St. Gregory site. What will the change be? And then going to the last page of the memorandum, if the applicant calculates shared parking demand, in other words, the residential has less parking demand at times when the commercial has more parking demand, they should consider if increased work at home has increased residential parking demand during work hours. And the applicant should consider whether reserved parking, assigned parking, tandem parking, accessible slash handicap parking, or electric vehicle parking, or other factors on the project site could lead to some parking spaces being unavailable at times. In other words, if some of this, if some of the parking is dedicated to retail and residential can't park there, the shared parking doesn't work as well. If, if tandem parking isn't perfectly managed, it could be spaces that, that are unutilizable at times. And the applicant should consider whether particular commercial uses could lead to larger parking demand than calculated. So those, those are my comments, and I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you. Oh, wait, actually, before you leave, does anyone have any questions or comments for?
I, I.
Good. Good.
I have just a question. I know, I think it was in the last, right, there was talk around making sure, kind of the different types of days, that the, the traffic counts were taken, or the parking counts, rather, and there was mention around having some of the busier days, the various Sundays where there's more traffic than others. Just wondering, do any of these counts take that into effect, or is that still not available or included in anyone's traffic count?
These counts were not, I would say it's a kind of a normal time. The priest from the church is here, and he could probably correct me if I'm wrong, but these would be normal Sundays, and what's coming up is Palm Sunday and Easter, and those would be busy Sundays. That church also has events at other times. They have bazaars, food festivals and so on, and they have dinners on Friday nights and some other functions as well.
Is there a reason, I'm sorry, that you weren't able to include that type of count in this?
The, the Friday, the Friday data included a function at the church. The reason we, we don't have any data on the really busy church, church weeks are because they haven't happened yet.
Got it. So it's needed a little bit of time to get those busy church counts.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I may respond, Mr. Chairman?
No, I don't, I don't think we need a response. I think we can take this for what it is and give it the weight that we kind of deem that it needs.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Yes, ma'am. Come on up.
Very briefly.
No, take your time you need.
42 Second Street.
Thank you, Lisa.
Continuing the topic of parking, I think we've kind of not, I've been at most of these meetings, and we haven't really discussed the tandem parking inconvenience and unworkability realistically. Whoever I've mentioned it tandem parking to shakes their head and just says, you know, that will never work. And not everybody drives a compact car, and there will be some trucks, and there'll be some S, large SUVs, and maybe even some vans. And people don't really like to be inconvenienced. And if they, if this variance grants these residents the right to park on the street, a lot of them will be parking permanently on Second Street and Main Street, and some of them even on Water Street. And I think that the size of this project needs to be rethought. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone further? Oh, okay. Any, yes. Hi. Good, thanks.
Dom Marie Paritas, 32 Second Street. Quick question, honest question. How many people generally live in the downtown area, Main Street, Water Street, Second Street? Do, I mean, just out of curiosity.
I don't have an answer to that.
It's pretty dense down there, right, compared to other sections of our town. So I'm just wondering how putting in a building where you're adding at least 50-plus more people is going to somehow begin to revitalize the downtown. I really do have questions about that.
Is that, that I could answer?
Okay. I, I would love, I really would, because I know I heard we talked about how many meetings we've had for this, but really and truly, we've, we've had not five really open for public comment since we've all, the butters have been notified. We've had less than that. So I would have asked that question sooner.
That's fine. It's a fine question to ask. So the downtown revitalization, I mean, I guess, can talk about how you define that, but the way I look at it is having more people using the downtown areas, being Main Street, Water Street, the Mills, High Street. And one of the best ways to get people to use an area is for people to live in the area. You can kind of see it as a chicken/egg thing. Do people come because there are businesses, or do businesses come because there are people? Generally, the, what's been kind of thought of in, at least in planning departments and planning circles over the last 10, 15 years is that it's the latter, that you have, if you have more people, both living, walking, visiting an area, that leads to more business investment, which often does lead to more people, sometimes does lead to more traffic, but it does lead to a revitalization, because if you're a business and you want to open a restaurant or a cafe, you don't want to do that where people aren't going to be coming throughout the day. And you don't want to be doing it necessarily where people are going to be just in and out. You want it where they're going to be living, working, hanging out. And so when we see the traffic studies that show at 6 o'clock on a Saturday that there are no cars parked, that's because there's nothing to do and nobody around. So in that sense, that is how it can be that additional people and residences can impact a growth of revitalization. Now, it's not the only answer. We have to invest, and one of the things the town is doing, has spent a lot of money in trying to come up with a revitalization of downtown plan and improvement plan. There's landscaping, there's the way traffic patterns and curb cuts and, and little parks, and there's a lot that can be done to add help parking is enforced, and that's, that's, there's a lot that goes into it. But one of the ways is to get more people in a place. Now, it doesn't guarantee anything, and there are additional consequences that come with having more people. That's true. But that's, that's how, I would say.
Thank you. And so we've added a number of other developments within a mile of downtown.
That's true.
How long before we start to see the results from those being placed? And is there some wisdom in seeing how that shakes down before we continue to put more people downtown?
I think that's a good question. I don't think we have an answer to that. I know a lot of the buildings have not yet been occupied, so we don't know. There probably is a tipping point, and that's one of the things that we've, one of the big discussions we had about Royal Crestwood is, are we reach a tipping point? Have we put enough people? What the size and scope of things? So that's something that we discuss for every project. And the question is, is this project one at that tipping point? Is it too large? Is it the right size? Those are the right questions that we are trying to answer. I don't think there's a answer of have we got there yet. But yes, we are considering those things as part of this, are, part of this project.
Right. Because one of the things that I'm concerned about is not just the size, but the timing of it, and how the downtown is going to be impacted by the things that we already have in motion that have already been built, and like you said, aren't quite occupied yet. I also, not that I have the experience that you do, but I, I think about specifically the two properties on Main Street that are the actual real butters, in my opinion, and who are going to be most impacted in the church as well. And I, I wonder, you know, obviously, corporations and developers are here for a reason, but downtown, if you look at our lot lines, which I'm sure you know them better than I do, a lot of them are drawn really narrow. They're, they're, they don't make a whole lot of sense for, like, modern day, you know, but we know that they are historic and they go back. And so I know there's a difference between on paper and reality and practice. And I'd love to just plead to you to really consider finding the balance between paper and reality and between kind of the big development, and then honoring the fact that a lot of these lot lines are really lousy, and people are doing the best they can with them. I wonder about the possibility of green space, where, where we're talking about right now, instead of putting more people in businesses, how about a little green space where people can actually walk their dogs? Mothers can come down with their children, strollers, sit on the park bench, have their kids play, walk down to the coffee shops that may or may not be there anymore. I know Dunk's just closed. And that way, you're honoring the residents who are right there already, but still moving forward with the change and the revitalization process. I will go back and say the tandem parking seems ridiculous. In reality, it's probably not going to happen, but why, why the 24 apartments? Why can't we find a balance of, of 12? Because my understanding is it's per floor. I don't quite understand why our town feels the need to honor this project in the timing and the size and the scope that it is, when there's probably other ways to transition and to honor the change that we want to have in not just downtown, but for the neighborhood. It really, it's our neighborhood. So is there a better way to find that middle ground? And that's just, those are some of the thoughts. And I appreciate you guys hearing me out and all of the work that you've put into it.
Any other comments? Okay.
I just have one quick comment.
Okay, go ahead.
I have a friend, colleague, who owns a business in town. And so I'm new to town. I said to her.
There you go.
Why don't you, well, it's almost two years, so I better stop saying that.
Still, I'll bet.
But I said to her, gee, why don't you think about expanding and taking over Dunkin' Donuts, where that was? And she said, I could never do that. There is no parking. So I'll rest on that.
Okay. Jeanne, we did get a comment in, you said?
Can we just have, can you state your name and address for the record?
Kathleen Hale.
Kathleen Hale.
Yeah.
Did you say we got a comment in?
It was that memo that.
Oh, okay.
Was provided to you.
Okay, so we've addressed them.
During the meeting.
Okay. Any other comments that have come in? No. Oh, someone wants to answer that?
No.
Okay.
Tina Messina, 63 Mifflin Drive, and for full disclosure, I'm one of the partners at First and Main.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to reiterate that what these people said is true. I just wanted to reiterate that what these people said is true. I happen to have been the person that, for the last 25 years, that has been leasing the property at First and Main. I can tell you that we have no problem leasing smaller spaces. And when I have, and this is the first year that we've really had a, a roadblock, when I tell you people aren't coming, because I, I do believe is what's going on with the economy. But oftentimes, what happens is, when I don't have space for people, because they're looking for 1,000, 2,000 square feet, I got plenty of 5,000 or 6,000 square feet, I got plenty of that. They want the smaller spaces. I ask them, why don't you go down the street? Why don't you do this? Why don't you do that? And Dunkin' Donuts was mentioned, I'm one of them. I had somebody that wanted to come in and they wanted to put in a wrap eat thing. And I said, well, why don't they go to Dunkin' Donuts? Oh, no, no parking. So the question I have is this, as these projects start coming forth, and we do find that there is a problem with parking, what is Plan B? Because the one thing that we've tried to be, we've owned this property since 1969. We know that it's a shared parking lot for the town. I've had many complaints sometimes from my, from my tenants. I've been able to calm them down because we tell them, these could potentially be your, your, your customers. If in fact we have to go to a monitoring type secure parking lot, that's game over for downtown. We already know there's about five to eight people that park in our parking lot all day, that go to either the dentist or TD Bank. We don't make a big deal out of it. But as the tenants start complaining, that becomes an issue of which we need to address. And I, I'm concerned that these types of projects that are coming, and when they come, are we going to have the ability for them to park? Because like I said, I, I, I sit here and I shake my head, just go down the street, no, no, there's no parking. I can't ask my customers. Fredericks was probably, when we had Fredericks Pastry, she was probably the one that really hit this home. She came out of New Hampshire and she wanted to go to Andover. But when she looked at her space, the first thing she said was, I can't have somebody spend $200 on a cake and walk three, four blocks. I need the parking to be out front. They're paying, you know, all this money and what happens if they slip and fall? I didn't want to do that to my customers. So I, I, when they say these things, I've lived it, I say it. And if we do have issues with these projects coming in, like we know, Bank of America is the next one. If they come in, where, where is Plan B? Because the last thing we want to do is, is shut that parking lot down. I mean, we don't want to do that. But, you know, as, as these things come up, we, we, we have to, we have to make decisions. So I'll be more than happy to answer any questions, if you have any. But that's basically what I'd like to say.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just ask a follow-up question?
Yeah, absolutely.
So I think I know the answers to these, but I just want to make sure that I'm absorbing it correctly. So you're a downtown business owner.
Yes, I am.
And your conclusion is that if the parking gets to the point where you have to monitor the parking lot that you own?
Yes.
That that is game over. Can you just explain that a little bit for me as a business owner? How are you arriving with that?
So I own the Wine Connection too.
I'm sorry?
I own the Wine Connection too. I'm one of, owners of the Wine Connection. Ease of parking, for that particular type of business, it's got to be an in and out. They don't want somebody sitting this, you know, sitting there and have to do some kind of, have to pay for parking or, like, I think the best indication I could tell you is, when you go to Andover and you go to the CVS parking, behind CVS, there's, there's an actual physical person there. That if you don't go into CVS, that person runs up to you and tells you, you can't park your car there, you have to move. And that's very costly. It doesn't make, for a very happy environment. And there's just a lot of options out there for people to bring their businesses in other places without those obstacles in front of their way.
And can I ask you another question?
Sure.
When you ask, what is Plan B, you know, with the Bank of America, et cetera? Given your depth of experience in the downtown and the business orientation, what, what are you thinking when you ask that question? What kind of Plan B? Can you just add a little color to that?
Sure. What I meant by Plan B is, I wasn't here at the last meeting, but I did, I did listen in on it. And there was talk about, we're going to build this, and then there was going to be competition for parking spaces, and we'll see what happens. So my question, I kept looking at the computer, well, what's Plan B? We, there is no, we, we've, we've had these discussions as to how do we get more parking? Because most of the town doesn't come down here, they don't even come down here for the, for the post office. Most of them sometimes go to And, most of them go to Andover, because it's very difficult parking. I've known people that have lived in this town that, you know, they don't, they, they don't know where my store is, when I've gone to them in different meetings and they've lived here for 10 years. It's just some, something that they don't go to. So yes, yes, we should have more. I applaud the, the, the apartments that are going in, and that's absolutely going to help. But I question what happens as these start, these aggressive kind of projects come in? And now we're forced to have to make a decision of, well, what happens if the First and Main people shut their parking lot off? Now, what do we, now there's no parking. Now where's Plan B? Where, where do you put these, these people? Because if you don't have the parking for them, the businesses aren't going to come. They're not going to come. It's just, especially if it's a business like a coffee, where you have to sit, wait a little bit.
So can I ask one more question?
Sure.
Go ahead, I just have some comments about what possible, about possible.
Can you hold that thought?
Yeah, yeah.
Because you can probably hold your thought better than I can.
You're already losing it. Go, 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 go.
So yeah, I got to go before I lose this. So I have never managed a parking lot, but it sounds like you have.
Yes.
So are you willing to offer your perspective on the viability of tandem parking? Because we've heard a lot of concerns raised, and maybe you're not, but I thought I would ask since you're a resident expert.
I can only tell you about tandem parking from the fact of the Messinas. We were a family of eight. We lived on Lyman Road. My father, only request of his children, when we all were able to get cars, was he has the right of way to get into his driveway and into his garage. The rest of us had to tandem, period case closed. And I tell you, he tried to expand it as much as possible, just park up on the little bit of a side curb. And we had at one time eight cars in this house in Lyman Road in Mass Ave. When some, when my mother wanted to leave, three of us had to move our cars. Yeah, I mean, it, it didn't make sense then, but either that or we didn't eat. So that's, that, I mean, tandem parking sounds great, but unless you're living, you're, you're managing it with the person that you're living with, there's something there. If it's a stranger, I mean, are they there? What if they go away for the weekend? I mean, I.
By the way, growing up here, we used to shop at Messinas. Great to hear the name.
The tandem spots were per unit, right?
Yeah, yeah, the, the tandem spaces are designed for the two-bedroom units. So basically, it'll be the same unit that'll have the back-to-back space in each of those dedicated units, so.
It's not shared by separate owners?
No, no, it's not. It's not for people behind each other, so.
Right.
So it's much more manageable.
Okay, so thank, thank you for your comments, they're much appreciated. And to add some of the parking, actual knowledge is helpful for us, we appreciate that.
Thanks for taking the time to come to the meeting.
Oh, please.
So what I would say is a couple of things.
You're all set with you.
Yes, I'll say with you, thank you. You can come back later if you want, but we're, we're just going to discuss.
Mr. Chairman, could I respond to?
Can I, hold on, let me talk first, and then if you need to, and if you need to, then you can after that. So some of the things that I've been thinking about as we hear this, one, we've talked about conditioning a parking study. I think a lot is hypothesized about, one, one, we've seen, one, we've seen the traffic, the parking data, which I was pretty comfortable with, with the actual numbers and actual studies and actual live data, more than, more than anecdotal data, based on the, so we've seen that. And I appreciated that and I, and I think it's pretty worthwhile. And two, I think we talked about a condition, about conditioning a parking study after everything's built out, to see how it goes and to see if changes need to be made or suggested. There are a lot of different changes that can be suggested. Some of them come from the board, some of them come from select board or police enforcement. So to answer Ms. Messina's question, if it ever was a situation where there were, I'm not necessarily going to say aggressive building, but if there were more buildings and more people downtown and parking became more congested, there are a lot of different avenues that can be taken. Some of them include making, in front of businesses, 15-minute parking or half an hour parking, things like that. In front of, you can make places resident parking, you can go to meters, you can go to different hours for certain parking. There's a lot that can be done if circumstances change. I don't think anything, to be honest, rises to that level at this point downtown. And if we get there, then I think there are discussions mainly with the select board and with police about enforcement that can do it. So when you get to, you know, Andover and you're going downtown, there's all parking meters and you, there's limits and they're pretty active down there about enforcing them. So I think with development and with revitalization and with additional business, you do have to look into those things. But I think you only, you really mostly focus on those when those things happen, and I don't think we're even close to that yet. So that's kind of my positions on Plan Bs, or one, conditions are part of our permit. And two, there are all sorts of changes to regulations that can be made to adjust for parking. So that's just a couple of things that I thought of off the top of my head that can be done. Did you want to add something, John?
Just a, just a few comments. I, I certainly respect Tina's comments and, you know, was involved with that permitting of her Plaza years ago. And, but I don't agree with everything that was, was said. I think that in terms of the site, the parking that's gauged for this site is not going to reach down to the, the distance that, that had been suggested, you know, previously. I think that the reason why the downtown is dying, or has been dying for some years, is look at, we have Bank of America, Cetander, and other vacancies in the downtown. And the reason we have vacancies in the downtown is because you don't have people coming. And I don't believe it's just because of parking. I don't think that's the reason, it's because we're not providing enough variety, we're not getting enough foot traffic downtown. And just as an example, you remember East and West Mill, 15 years ago, it was a ghost town. And because of the fact that the owners and the developers gradually phased in additional commercial and residential businesses, it's created a thriving downtown and it's essentially replaced the downtown area. And so I, and so, you know, in terms of the, the town zoning for the downtown overly district, for this sub-district, I think that providing additional residential to complement the commercial is only going to make the downtown thrive like East and West Mill. And, and so something has to be done with the downtown. And I think that this board has done a lot of effort in terms of planning and examining some of the causes. But all the other downtowns that I know that have problems aren't, aren't bringing in the residential. I mean, I'm not going to sort of, sort of compare it to Havrell. But Havrell added additional residential units and created a thriving downtown Washington Street area. And so that's the formula to, to bring back the downtown area. And I think that our studies, our traffic studies, our parking utilization studies really bear out that, that basically we don't have a parking problem per se in the downtown area. We have a, we have a problem with attracting higher-end commercial in this area. And the way you do that is by bringing more foot traffic in. And I think that the way that the zoning is drafted today and, and the studies that have, have been developed really bears that out. If you build, build it up and build an additional residential, folks will come to the downtown and you'll get a higher quality tenant, so.
Can I follow up with a question?
Go ahead.
So John, I, I think it goes without saying, but I'll say it, that I certainly respect your views and experience as well, and I'm sure the board does as well. And so given that, I'm asking if you can help me reconcile what I hear you saying, we don't have a parking problem downtown, with what I think I can fairly describe as the incredulous reaction of residents living downtown when they hear that. And notably, the cautionary words of a major, longtime business owner who manages the largest parking lot, saying, if we approach a tipping point for parking, it's game over for the downtown. So help me reconcile your view that we don't have a parking problem with view of residents and a major business owner.
Well, number one, I think we provided the data to support that in terms of the parking utilization in the area. And sometimes you do get a little more traffic, you're, that's true. But I also have lived in this town. I, I drive down that area every single day, or maybe six out of seven days of the week. I have never had a problem finding a parking space in the downtown for any of those businesses that I frequent over there. And so I think, you know, the fact that your businesses, we have vacancies in the downtown area, I think that tells you the reason why. It's just, we're not attracting enough of people to the downtown area to frequent those businesses.
So I think I could accept and agree and support your theory that you, you have to attract more residents. But, but to me, that doesn't necessarily answer the parking issue.
No, I think, I think it does.
Well, let me finish. Aren't they closely related? But the caution we have from a longtime business owner is, this is all great, as long as you have a plan and a Plan B for parking. In the face of the data, that's business experience. So, so I hear you saying about the theory of more residences, I'm not challenging that. I'm asking, if that's true and we do that, what about the parking?
Okay, let.
I, I mean, if I may add, because I think Eten said it well, is that, and I think, John, you said it is, today, I think the statistics show that there may be peak periods on occasion, more anecdotal than anything, when we have a parking problem. We're very point-specific, because I remember, Jean, one time you were telling me, oh, there was one spot where the people that were living in the buildings parked on the street all day long, you could solve that problem. And I think frankly, we're in a session there where there's a lot of micro-things that we can do to mitigate the problem. And you're right, in the long term, you do have to look at it. If there's two or three times as many people living downtown or businesses downtown that exist today, you can't exist the way it is today. But I think we're far from that tipping point today. I don't think we're anywhere close to it. And, yeah, we don't want to do dumb things, like, and that's why, you know, for me, putting decisions, you know, something in a decision, for example, that says, the people that live in the building can't park on the street overnight. Okay? That's the kind of thing you want to avoid, because that's a point-specific problem. But I don't think there's an overwhelming general problem.
So I appreciate that, John, but let's, and, and I would totally agree that if we do this, we have to have those conditions, you know, six months, 12 months, how's it going? What do we do about it? But what would the alternative be if, let's, let's say, they were parking on the street?
But if they were parking on the street?
I mean, what's the planning board, are we going to, you know, keep an eye on it?
No, that's, it's six, six months, 12, and, and by the way, if, if they're parking on the street, we're going to hear about it sooner than that.
Oh, yeah.
And, and we could, you know, it's, it's the condition or a special permit. I mean, I, I think we got an ironclad position here that we can manage and control. I feel sort of better on this one than I do on just any other one that we've done.
Ironclad, manage and control it by doing what?
So what happens is, we, we condition that there needs to be a traffic study and, and we need to hear about if there are, not traffic, a parking study, right? They come back in six months and it shows that there are X more cars than expected, and we have had 15 neighbor complaints about it. Then we call them back in and say, hey, we're worried that you're in violation of your permit, what's happening here? You need to explain, where are people parking, what's actually happening? And we have a hearing about it, and then we decide whether or not the permit needs to be modified. And that's what you do. And then you also, like I said, you can, if there, you can then say, okay, now we know the problem is in this area, the problems are in this area, and when are they? And then you go to the chief. And then you go to the chief of police and say, "Hey, there's a problem here, select board, you need to make this half-hour parking, you need to make this resident-only parking." I mean, there are different scenarios and it also depends on what's there and what's the situations on the ground.
So, that means that the planning board might be doing things and taking stands, enforcement-related stands, that at least I, I don't think I've seen since the brief time I've been here compared to you, John.
I think it's more finding the right parties to effectuate it. But yes, I mean, ultimately, if we're going to approve something and there's this fear that even if, if we may believe, we may not believe, and if it does come to fruition, we want to at least be able to do something about it, but I don't think we do nothing just because of the possibilities of things in the future.
So, you're suggesting that this is a way to monitor, follow up, and manage the balance between the benefits John is telling us about additional residences versus the challenges and concerns we're hearing about parking from both residents and businesses? That this approach is, is in fact, the first part of Plan B?
I think that's fair. I mean, it's the same thing with lighting, but I think it's fair, yeah?
And, and there'd be a willingness to take those steps on the part of the board as you can see, you know, as far as you can see looking forward. We're not going to shy away from this.
No.
I mean, I, I think it's even more than that, because every single one of us has an interest in revitalization of downtown. I mean, I look at it for all the years I've been on the planning board, it's one of the things that I wish we had done sooner. So, I feel like I have skin in the game, I have a pretty big stake in it. And you're right, Peter, that nothing would do that revitalization if we just ended up with a severe parking problem related to this project, because it would to the credibility of any future development. So, I feel like it's something we're going to watch and watch pretty intently. And the big advantage is, you know, most of us are down here fairly often, which even makes it a little bit better, but the point is, I think we will be looking at it.
Just so you know, every time I hear somebody say, you know, respectfully, I'm trying to be respectful, every time I hear someone say, "Oh, I'm down there every day, I drive through there six out of seven days." With all due respect, I, I have to wonder just how painful that is to hear on the part of residents and business owners downtown, because they don't drive through once a day, they live and work there. And so, I'm just cautioning everyone, it's great that we go downtown, I do too, but I don't live there, and I just appreciate the time we're taking to listen to and discuss the concerns we're hearing from the professionals, the people who live and work there.
And I would say, Peter, just two things. So, I agree, the, the key word, I think, is balance, because we are balancing the effects of a project like this and potential future projects on the people that live there and the effects and positives that that has on the town as a whole. And that's what our job is on many projects, and the hardest part.
The good thing we're well-paid for.
Exactly. I think our salaries need to double after this.
But I will say, if I may.
Hold on, let me finish. But the other thing that Ms. Messina said that I think is also very true, and the reason why we do need to monitor this is because it, it won't be the end, right? Bank of America, definitely, you see the sign, "Up for sale." And for me, you know, I, I look at this as a model of how things hopefully can be, not necessarily the same size or the same scope or the same things, but the way of these types of projects. And so, I think we do need to monitor, because we need to know, you know, going forward, let's say, someone comes to us in a year or two years with a project at Bank of America. Well, we're going to want that data anyway, now we're already collecting it and doing it.
Right.
As a matter of part of this.
And I would just have to add, because it's, I think, an important segue here, that if something like that, such as at Bank of America occurs, I really hope we're going to be able to act on our previous discussions about having some form of notification sooner. Because in this example, John, I know you disagree with us, I know you disagree, but John, here's the thing I don't get. One of the big, we've heard a lot about parking, we've heard a lot about, "Why is it twenty-four units? Why can't you reduce it?" If we had given people the courtesy of knowing that, "Hey, we're starting to talk about this, it's not a public hearing yet, but we're starting to talk about it," they would have been here to hear and see the reduction that was discussed in those informal meetings. And you would have had the opportunity for that public ownership of that decision. You lost that. To me, that hurts the effort. So, I know you disagree with us.
I disagree.
But I, I totally get it. I really hope we follow through on that discussion, because you're right, it's balance. And when we talk about balance and the need for the residents and the business owners to support this effort, we need transparency, we need daylight, we need engagement upfront.
If I may, if I may respond to that. I think.
Last word, last word, and then we're going to move, we're going to go.
Just, just for the fact that, again, I don't agree with you, Peter, but I, I respect your comments, but I think that, you know, I've, I've represented developers in about a hundred and twenty-five different cities and towns. This would be the only town that I know that starts a process, has a first hearing before it has its actual first hearing. And, and there's a reason why an applicant wants to come in to see the planning board before it makes outreach to the abutters. It wants to get a sense of the direction of designing a project at the early stages so that we get a sense of where the board is, is headed in terms of concept. And that's the reason why we did it that way. And I told you, I told the board at that time that we haven't reached out to the abutters yet, because we wanted to get a initial sense from the board, because the board reviews these projects all the time. And so, so I, I think that's, I, I still think that's the way to go. I, I, I don't agree, I mean, we won't get into the side comment about notifying and having two, essentially two hearings for a project.
No, well, not, not necessarily.
But, but, but regarding Peter's, Chair, through the chair, Peter's comment, I didn't mention the only fact that I, that I drive through the town every day. I also backed that up with data and parking utilization data. An average of thirty percent parking utilization is not eighty percent parking utilization. We don't have a problem with that. And I, I'm, I'm sensitive to the fact that the neighbors are concerned about parking, but I can also say that everyone does not like new change or development or, or change. And so, what I've, what I've tried to do, and what we've tried to do as a team, is put the data together and we, we've had discussions and, and we, we've had peer review. And, and so, I don't know what else we could do to put on a, a better presentation. I understand your concerns about not reaching out earlier to, to the, the abutters, but that's the way normal projects go. They want to have initial feedback from the planning board to make sure there is the right direction. Because we could talk to the abutters all day long, and if we don't come to the planning board and the planning board says, "Oh, forget it," you know?
I'm not saying you shouldn't come to the planning board, John, and I also just, this is going to be unusual, so brace yourself, I'm going to compliment you, that I appreciate your point about you brought the data. And I think we grilled you pretty hard on that parking data and you came back to us. So, I appreciate the effort you put into that and the consideration in listening to the concerns, and yes, I think you brought us a good product for that parking plan, so thank you.
Okay. And I do drive almost.
Okay, I'm going to take, let's take two more, up to two more comments, and then we're going to go to vote on what we're doing next. Go ahead.
If you're talking about after six months, finding out that we have a parking problem, you can't go back to the builder or to the condo association, as it were, because they have no place else to move those cars to, that have depended upon, on-street parking. They don't have enough parking, they can't move them. And instead of preemptively dealing with the issue, you're going to wait until after it's built and then deal with the problem, should it arise? Doesn't make sense to me.
So, I'll, I'll say, I, I think we've, I think we've dealt with the problem as it is. We do that as basically a Plan B to confirm, but I do think we've actually, the conditions and the discussions we have actually do deal with the project, and I do think frankly, that there is enough parking. But we do that really just to double-check. Okay? Did you want to say, or are you just standing, is that just your seat space? Okay.
Yeah, earlier, he had said Haverhill.
Okay.
Haverhill has four covered.
No, yeah, we're not, yeah, we're not, I, we're not compared to, okay. All right, board members.
I have one more.
Oh, perfect.
I'll get your name.
I'm Dawn Marie.
Dawn Marie. Hi, I'm Kim Adams, I'm at Fifty-Five Maple Ave.
Hi, Kim.
I really like what Dawn, Dawn, you said? Dawn Marie said earlier about sort of creating a compromise. So, I live on Maple Ave, which is parallel to Main Street, and I go down Second all the time and I'm just, and I, so I live in this neighborhood with my husband and raise my son here. And we moved to the Ray Maynard's old house, if anybody knows Ray from many, many years ago. We've been there since nineteen ninety-seven. So, I love new things happening, but I know that the traffic pattern of Maple, Second, First, Main Street has definitely increased. More people live in town, which I guess can be a good thing. It is a good thing, and there are more variety of people, which is a wonderful thing as well. But I do worry about, and I am late to the party, so I apologize to other residents and to you for not speaking up sooner than this, but I would like to, I, I just like what Dawn said about, so I'm sure it doesn't feel like, this won't be happy for developers to hear, but to slow the process down a little bit more, to create more compromise, to have less residential, just, just to see how it works, because there seems to be a tremendous amount of building going on in North Andover right now, and will those places be occupied? What is going to happen? And I think we sort of need to see what happens before we move forward with another project. The other thing I want to say too, is I think it is a balance, but what you bring in for retail is important and variety is important. And that's something I haven't really seen as much as I would like, especially on Main Street. So, you know, I'm a massage therapist by trade, and so I don't actually care about my nails very much, because I just have to cut them off and keep them short. But at one point, there were so many hair salons and nail salons that I, I questioned, I, I don't know what we're, what we're after here in North Andover.
And banks.
And banks, exactly. So, anyway, I've already talked off the cuff here, wasn't planning to speak, but I just wanted to say something that I am a resident, I've lived here a long time, I see more and more traffic. It's hard to get out of Second Street, that's the other thing. So, I worry about, I'm just, I just worry about that situation too. Okay, thank you very much.
We appreciate your comment, thank you. Okay. So, I, we have a draft decision. I'd be in favor of voting on that draft decision. Is there anyone that does not want to vote on that? Let's put it that way.
Well, I'm still concerned about how, and I think you were the one who came up with the most quotable quote when we had the discussion about cognitive bias, that it may be easy for us to think, "Jeez, we've, we've rarely been slogging through this since August and, you know, we got to get moving." But my perspective is, we've been slogging through this since December.
Fair.
And now, Gene, just as a point of clarification, you told us at the beginning that we've had five public hearings, and that's from December, correct?
December twentieth, the hearing opened.
Okay.
It was continued to February seventh, February twenty-eighth, March seventh, March twenty-one.
So, there weren't five meetings, some of them were continued, right?
No, I skipped all the dates.
Okay, okay, good.
So, December twentieth, the next one was February seventh, which means they didn't come to the two January meetings.
Right, gotcha, gotcha. So, there were actually five meetings since.
Five, five hearings.
Since the notifications were made. And so, that's, and, and to be fair, when, when we started with the informal, we discussed this, that, hey, we're going to sit here and listen, but when we get to public hearings, if we need to change our minds, at least me, we're going to change our mind, at least I'm going to change my mind, and, and that's my timeline. And so, I understand that the administrative process here has moved along and we have a draft decision and we could vote on it, but, for example, we do have from the church a, you know, photo finish, traffic assessment, and, you know, I think there's a concern about how anecdotal that is versus the traffic study that was done at much greater length by the applicant, but, but for example, should we have time for comment on that? That's just one example. And, and I'm not sure that it's the only example. So, yes, I know we could vote administratively, we're ready to do it. I'm, I'm not comfortable, I would prefer not to be voting on the decision now, because I think we are moving very quickly and we have a lot of, we have some great participation, which I think we welcome. What I'm struggling with is, if we have more time, to do what? That's what I'm struggling with. And the only example I can come up with right now is to have some comments, perhaps by the applicant, perhaps by third-party on the photo finish. And look, I, I get it, it's a photo finish, but quite frankly, I, I give the nonprofit church credit for having the wherewithal to bring that to bear so quickly.
Agreed. Okay, so that's why, that's why I asked.
Okay, then thank you.
But, but I want to get, I, but let's, I'd like to hear other people's opinions as well.
I have a logistics problem, and it may sound bad, but I, I'm going to be away the next meeting, and I am going to be here tonight. And I think honestly, if you really looked at the fundamental parking situation strategically, I don't think any of this information we heard tonight from this, from the other engineer, well-intentioned, everything, it changes the fundamentals of the situation. I, I don't think at all, and I don't think anything will change if we wait two weeks, four weeks, six weeks. I, I don't think there's really anything new that comes down, that's going to come, anybody's going to bring to bear on this that's, that's going to change anything. I mean, I don't know, I, I just don't see it.
Kelly, thoughts? And we'll get to everyone else. Kelly?
I'm leaning towards wanting more time to now understand the traffic study, and there was a couple of comments around having the additional traffic data and that time to get that done.
So, I don't think there is additional traffic data, basically.
Parking.
Parking, I'm saying parking.
They're more crowded, it's parking, sorry, I misspoke.
No, no, I agree, parking, but, I mean, it looks like the church looked on a couple of days where they were busy and found that they were busy. I mean, that's.
All right, okay, then maybe that's my, my misunderstanding, I thought there were other days where they were more busy that they wanted, you know, the, the busier days, they wanted included. My, I must have misunderstood that.
No, I look, what, what the, what the study says is that St. Gregory personnel observed parking on Sunday, March twelfth, on Friday, March seventeenth, and on Sunday, March nineteenth, and on these days, there were a lot of full parking in that area. And that's basically what it says.
But, but I think the comment was that Easter, for example, is a more busy day, and, and I don't think they actually said it, but I think there was an inference that, that perhaps measurements on one of those days would be appropriate.
So, let's, so let's, let's assume that it is. I, I'm sure it is.
Yeah.
Let's assume that every parking space in town on Easter is taken. I don't see to me how that's relevant to this project at all, because if that's the case, then we can't build anything in town, because on Easter, it's crowded at a church. It's going to be crowded at every church on Easter, it's going to be crowded on, you know, Christmas mass, and there are times when other places are going to be crowded. If there's a event on the common, it's going to be crowded. I mean, there definitely are times where it is going to be crowded, but I, I don't see how getting more information would lead to a change in any of the conditions or approval or things like that. That's, I guess I'm coming to where John is, that yes, we could have more time to get more information, I just don't see how any more of these details, even assuming they meet what is being kind of stated, how that changes anything. I guess that's my point, is, we could assume that it's as crowded as it can be, that's true, and so, but I just don't think that's going to change. And so, but I just don't think that's going to change anything. So that's, that's just kind of where I'm coming from. Melissa?
Yeah. And Peter, I'm with you. I'm thinking, okay, if we wait, if we have more time, what, what are we waiting for? What, what significant amount of data or material is going to make a huge change? And I, and knowing that we can put a condition on it, coming back, see it, make adjustments, that we have options, I just don't see what significant amount of data would make that, make us have to make a complete.
Well, and the comment I made was, that's, that's what I'm struggling with. I don't know what it is we would do with additional time. So I am agreeing.
Yeah, yeah, I'm saying, I agree with that comment as well. And I think we all, we all want to see downtown threat. We want to see it progress. We want to see it do well. I don't think, I don't think any of the residents here want to see a dying downtown. I don't think that's at dispute. I think it comes down to what are we going to do to, to help make that happen? And are we making the right choices as our duty on behalf of stewards of the community to make that happen? And it's a hard choice, and it's a hard position for all of us to be in. And we hear the comments, and we take them to heart, and we do take them seriously. And, and we do appreciate every comment that the residents make because it really does help us make a decision. But again, I come back with, okay, what is, is, is the parking significant of a detail and something that we have absolutely no control over in the future that's going to make this project fear? And I just, I don't see that it would. And I would feel completely comfortable going forward and voting on, on, on the decision today.
John, I know you're not voting, but just for your opinion.
Get a couple of comments. I mean, I, I mean, going back, you know, and this has kind of been reiterated, is that I, I just don't see there's going to be any new information that we're going to get, right? And going back to the parking study and the photo finish is, is that, I always look at it, parking is, is that, you know, while there might be Easter, but you got to assume steady state on parking, right? There's going to be always ups and downs across parking. And then just looking at, you know, anecdotally on the data, is that even within the study, it's well below the 131 threshold that the applicant, you know, portrayed as kind of the 80% capacity. So, I mean, even with, even with this new information, it doesn't move the needle to saying like, this is a material thing that we need to look at. So this is kind of my two cents on it.
So I, I don't disagree with any of those comments, as I said. Yep.
But don't you want more residents here so that you can really stage and move on? I mean, is there not a little group thing going on right now?
I'm sorry, I can't hear.
Yeah.
I can step up if I'm allowed to. I just don't know what you're.
No, I think, I think this is, no, I think this is just a conversation within the board at this point. Thank you, though. Okay, so Kelly, any final thoughts?
No, I think, just that going back to comments that were made earlier about that we, we need to enact the early kind of notification process that we talked about. I see zero downside to making sure that every resident that needs to be notified as soon as possible. To expect everyone to be scouring every agenda for everything that comes up is unreasonable. So anything that we can do to help spread that information sooner is something we need to do, even if no other town has. Maybe they'll start to be more like us.
I, so I agree. I also think there are other things that we can do, just kind of tangentially. I was talking with some other people about, you know, can we do things more on social media where we just given like, so we send out the agenda every week, but it's kind of hard to read through if you don't know what you're talking about. So could we put out, when we put out our agenda, could we put out a one-minute TikTok or video just saying? No, see, I know, I know, I know, I know. But just saying, hey, this is what we're, no, but saying, hey, this is what we're.
YouTube, not TikTok.
Wait till I tell my kids we're doing a TikTok. They'll run screaming from the room.
But this is what we're talking about this week. We're going to be talking about downtown and a project that may happen. Just putting out, just there are different ways to get out the information that, hey, this is something that's coming up. And being creative about it.
Yep, love it.
So I, and I agree with you, Peter. I think the more transparency we have about that, the better. But again, I'll say, you know, we've had five hearings since December. Usually we have three. We're required to have one. So, and that's not the end-all, be-all, but we've done a lot. We've heard a lot from the residents. There have been changes made. And again, I agree with Sean. I just don't see that there will be any other information. But yes, Kelly, I think we, another, a similar project, I would go through that process that we discussed. Okay. So, so let's, let's, if we're going to vote, should we, why don't we look at the draft decision before closing the public hearing, just in case there are questions or comments about that? Okay, so do we have that? And you want to pass it off? Can we put it on the screen as well?
Yes.
If, if anyone does have a question or comment about the draft decision, either the applicant or someone in the public, you're welcome to come up because the public hearing is still open.
Jean, does this have the contingencies we've been talking about?
To the best that I could include. You, you can read them and modify them. It's not six months and a month and, and a year. It's a year.
Okay. Hi.
So I read through the draft earlier.
Yeah.
And I did have a question.
Yeah.
At one point, it mentions the condo association. I wonder what the process is. Do we get to require the condo association to, you know, observe certain rules or practices that we want since this is downtown facing, and there are balconies and laundry, that might be those sorts of things?
No, it's more that they have to have a association plan, and that has to be submitted.
Okay, so the town has no say over?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
I think we might be missing a page. There's no two or four.
Right, two.
Six.
Oh, you don't have a back.
Yeah, I don't have a back.
Here.
Is that the case in all of them?
Here, no, mine does, yeah.
Well, I want you to read it.
I'll read it online. I have it, I have it.
Is there another?
No, I have it on the computer.
There's one right there. Does anybody else need another one?
I have it, I have it on the computer. This device that, where the TikToks go from.
Yeah, I know, yeah. As long as you don't go with purple hair or something like that.
So just for everyone, just to pay attention to, I think, is this our first that would have inclusionary zoning under the bylaw?
Yes.
So paragraphs 21 and 22 talk about the inclusionary zoning requiring three affordable units to be created. And you guys have reviewed that and are aware of that? Attorney Smolak, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Just making sure.
We get into the parking conditions, Jean. I know, third, well, 38 is the one that we've been talking about that deals with that, and 37 deals with the lighting. There were, first of all, there were a couple of things even before the study that I would prefer to put in the decision. One is that, and I mentioned this, that there's no overnight parking by the residents of this property.
On the street.
On the street.
On the street, yeah. No on, on-street parking by the residents, okay. And the other thing, and this may be baked into the 38 that I think is a big thing, is that the concern is related to First and Main that we somehow, maybe it's we incorporate that into our study and, you know, that.
That's what I said.
Well, I, maybe not put it in this issue, but we do have to incorporate it when we study is that there's no spillover from, you know, heavy spillover, like, from the people that work in retail there that they, you know, they use First and Main or other private parking lots or something like that, you know.
And should it be 12 months after a certificate of occupancy? I thought we talked about multiple, like, six months and then 12 months.
I think we should do, I think we should do for two years in a six-month interval.
Two years, six-month interval.
Yeah. So six months after CO, then 12, then 18 and 24, I think. That way, there'll be enough repetition that, yeah.
That's more than you acquired for Amazon.
Hey, it's not Amazon. It's the Polar Office. It'd be, and if it works out right, it'll be easy. You know, it'll be performant. If you guys knew what you say you're going to do, it'll be a simple process.
So, so on that, I just want to make sure that we're somewhat flexible based on conditions. So, and it can kind of go either way, right? If we get a six-month study and a year study, and there's like no difference, then I'd say you can, if you want to file to modify something like that, you can. At the same time, if the, let's say the commercial doesn't come in, like, let's say they get a CO, but they put in all the residential, and they don't have a tenant, and the commercial doesn't come in for the first six months, well, then that study's not really very worthwhile because it doesn't take into account.
I agree with that.
So I think we just have to be willing to kind of roll with how things changes on the ground.
Well, that's where I think our flexibility comes in.
But as long as we still do it.
Yes, yes, yes. But I'm saying, we may have to kick it out some. We may have to move it up some.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, we have, when, when we're looking at it.
Yes, I agree.
We have to be flexible kind of in both directions.
You might put, without making it onerous, you know how like we would traditionally put in things like about screening and landscaping, that if things go awry in the future, we would ask the applicant to go back and fix the problem? Maybe that's what you do after, you know, just say, you know, as, as required or intermittently after that, if there's problems occur.
So I would, I mean, I would say, I mean, if you guys, I would say one year and two years rather than six, one, 18, 24. Just, I'm not sure we're going to get enough valuable data between those time periods.
The concern is waiting a year.
Yeah.
Okay.
What if we did six, 12, 24?
Okay, or six and 18?
Yeah, I like six, 12, 24.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
If I may ask.
Yeah.
So for example, if we're month 12 and we're not fully occupied, could we ask for, I mean, you want an analysis when we're fully occupied?
Well, so what I would say is at that point, come in with a insubstantial change request. Right, because we want to make it done when it's worthwhile for everybody. If we do it too early or too late, if we do it too early, it doesn't give us any information. If we do it too late, then there might be already a problem. So I think six, 12, 24, and then we can come, come with an insubstantial change if there's no reason to do it at six months because nobody's living there yet. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay, good, okay.
I'm going to strike condition 75 because it's a doofy.
Where's the lighting? Okay, 37, I got it, that's fine.
What about 62? We had a comment from a resident about the condo association. We're listing all sorts of categories for the condo association, like driveways, infrastructure, recycling containers. Can we have some reference to visuals of balconies? I mean, is there a way to do that that is not imposing on people? You heard the comment?
Yeah, no, no, I did hear it. I'm just trying to figure out, like, it seemed to me that it would be fair to say that the whatever kind of documents exist, we want them, but they have to be in conformity with the decision. Right? I mean, if you want to say, maybe we should say that. I know it sounds dumb, but, you know.
Thank you, Bill.
But beyond that, or I think there's something more, but I'm just, you know.
Well, one of the resident comment was, is there any sort of role of the condo association or interaction with the community for the, you know, condition of the balconies that's visible to the neighborhood? And they use the example of hanging laundry and, I mean, maybe that helps save energy.
I think that's unlikely to happen, but then.
Is there a way we could be responsive to that?
Maybe there's something in the decision that proscribe, and again, I'm being very general here, prescribing noxious uses in the residential part of the property, therefore you couldn't do that. The problem is when you end up getting two specific, well, specific things running.
I don't want to put laundry on a decision, yeah.
The point is that frankly, this is going to, it's going to be a condo. It's going to be reasonably expensive. The condo, of course, is not going to do something like that. It just, it would be dumb.
Eighton 63 is also.
Inclusionary.
Yes, thank you, Peter.
Is there, there was a lot of conversation and questions around kind of the successfulness of the tandem parking. Is there anything in here we'd have, would it make sense to do anything around it, kind of evaluating or enforcement to make sure that the tandem parking is used?
Why don't we just include that as in the, just, so if we go back to 38?
Yeah.
So, so it's a parking utilization monitoring study, and, you know, something like, including use of onsite parking.
Including the tandem, right?
Right, yeah, yeah.
That's actually getting used.
Yeah, yeah. Because it's all tangential. I mean, theoretically, if everyone's using the parking spaces on town, then we don't, on the site, then we're not having a problem on the street. So it's all tangential, but we can specifically add that.
Yeah, because there could be things that could be done at that point, too, right? To help encourage the use of tandem parking by the residents.
Yep, my, yep. That's good. Jean, was there anything in terms of stormwater that we needed to add in specifically? I don't recall anything, right? Nothing unusual, okay. Okay.
Anything that was suggested to be conditioned has already been resolved.
And there's a, and there's a environmental monitor. Is there a construction monitor?
I didn't. To me, the environmental monitor provides.
I just, if, if, I'm okay with not having a construction monitor, but I would like there to be somewhere that, that the applicant should at least provide planning with a contact information or, I want there to be some sort of contact information so if residents have an issue, that they know who they can contact. So I don't know if it's just some sort of requirement that.
During construction?
Correct.
Yeah.
During construction. So if there's an issue during construction, that, that there's at least somewhere that someone can contact and that we at least have that on file.
Given how close this is to kind of the residential housing, going, you know, three and a half feet on one, in one area, is there any consideration we could or should make around the hours of construction, starting at 7:00 AM? Seventy.
It's seven Monday through Friday and eight on Saturday.
I mean, that's been standard. That's what Avalon Bay's operating under those hours in a pretty dense neighborhood as well.
Yeah, I know, it's, it's standard, right? It's just, it's, you know, we're not, we've spent time talking about three and a half feet away from someone's window, which I think is definitely closer, at least than anything I've, I've seen in the few years I've been on. I should know if there was any consideration there.
That's a good question. I think, I think, I'd be inclined to leave it at seven, but I'm always.
I mean, that's, that's self-adjusting in the field. Like, if you're going to do something close to the house, you do it midday.
Right, and well, and also like the, the longer you construct in the day, the less time the construction goes on. I mean, it's kind of a trade-off, right? So good to raise, definitely. Okay. Anyone else have any other questions or comments? All right, so can we get a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Motion made. Can we get a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor of closing the public hearing? Kelly?
Yeah.
Alyssa?
Yes.
John?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
I vote yes. Okay, public hearing is closed. Can we get a motion to approve the special permit for 149 Main Street and 14 Second Street, petition of Second and Main LLC, as. petition of Second and Main LLC, as amended?
So moved.
Motion made, can we get a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor, Kelly?
Yeah.
Alyssa?
Yes.
John?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
And I vote yes. So that is approved with the conditions as established. Okay, I do want to thank everyone for coming and participating, we appreciate it. Thank you to the applicants for your work on the case as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We do have some other business that we're, guys, we do have some other business that we still have to take care of, so if everyone just wants to step out, that would be great, unless you have that part of the business. Thank you. Okay. Who wants to adjourn? No. All right, Dave, we'll take you guys. One High Street, RCG North Andover Mills LLC, application for modification to existing Sub District A definitive master plan special permit under Chapter 195, Article 18, Downtown Overlay District and 195 10.7 of the North Andover zoning bylaw. The applicant seeks approval to modify the special permit to allow for the conversion of approximately 10,000 square feet of existing commercial space within the historic mill buildings, which is a portion of the space commonly known as 120 Water Street, and 12 residential apartment units. The property is located in the IAS zoning district downtown overlay district, sub district A, historic mill area and machine shop village neighborhood conservation district.
All right, so the applications for modification to an existing Sub District A definitive master plan special permit for the East Mill, under Chapter 195, Article 18, Downtown Overlay District and 10.7 of the zoning bylaw, what am I reading, what new district, yes, sorry. All right, so you may recall that in December 2022, the applicant requested an insubstantial change to allow for the proposed conversion of commercial space to residential space. The board did not approve the request, and now the application is before you to modify the special permit. At the time, no changes were proposed to the property or the structures, other than the uses and structures previously approved by the planning board. The application does not propose any exterior changes or site plan changes. The modification consists only of interior floor changes. The current general, the current general business use requires 30 parking spaces. The proposed mix of residential units would require 17 spaces or 13 less. As stated above, the original approvals for the property were transitioned and incorporated into the Sub District A special permit, including the May 2008 planned development district special permit. This original approval contemplated the conversion of approximately 65,000 square feet of vacant space within the mill buildings into an additional 50 residential units, only eight of which were constructed under the 2008 permit. It is noted that in addition to changing market demands after the original permits were issued, the applicant was subject to a building moratorium that limited its, limited its residential construction at the time to 10 units per year. Further, the Phase 1 approvals from 2007 planned development district permit approval for, included approval for conversion of 20 residential units within the complex. 19 of those were constructed. So, in, in total, 70 units were approved and 27 units were actually built. A, a butter did submit comments this afternoon, which are included in your packet. I think that's all I have. Also, DPW simply cautions that the water meter may need to be changed out based on increased usage, and that would be at the applicant's expense. And the building inspector cited a number of building code requirements, so not typically what you, you would entertain through site plan, but that those code requirements were shared with the applicant.
Okay, Brian?
Brian Vaughn from Smolak and Vaughn, on behalf of the applicant, RCG. I think you're somewhat familiar with this, obviously we were before you in the past, and I think the benefit is that tonight we're before you with notice to the public, as we just saw, is probably significant and important to this, to this board, to make sure that it's transparent. So we did have one comment that came in today. I would say just two things that I, I wanted to point out where we were before you in the past, that there was one slight change, and I believe we went from 11 units to 12 units, and the prior original application, we had proposed a couple of, I think, a three-bedroom unit, a couple of two-bedroom units, and we, while we added one unit, we, we reduced the bedroom counts, basically, so I think now we only have one two-bedroom unit, the rest are ones and studios, so, not that this necessarily matters, but those aren't the, the units that are creating additional students in the school systems generally, or additional parking demands. The one other thing I would point out is I had included the plan that's up now, which was not in the, the original one, just to show you exactly where this was in, in, in the complex. And the final point, I guess I would, I would raise, which wasn't mentioned, just to remind you, I had included in our original informal filing, but this particular property is entitled to the benefit of a zoning freeze, so that the inclusionary bylaw does, does not apply to it. Outside of that, I don't know if you have any particular questions?
Does anyone need help with orientation of the space?
Yes.
So Water Street is to the far left.
Yeah.
The corner of the building is the corner of Water and High, where Stachis is located.
Okay.
So, it's the middle of Water.
Is the zoning, the zoning freeze what, is, was there a subdivision?
Yes.
Correct. We, we had subdivided the property, so it's...
When was that? Assume less than eight years ago.
Is that compass route pointing north? Is it labeled north?
On the far right. Up on the far right.
That's north.
North arrow, yeah.
So the subdivision was done at the same time as the Pond Building got permitted and broken into its own lot. Avalon has since purchased that and is under construction. So it broke out the whole East Mill complex as a lot, the Pond Building as a lot, and the parking garage area as the third. And it was done at that same time, so 19, 2019, or...
Right.
So this zoning hasn't changed, but inclusionary housing is a different special permit, but it's on the...
It's a zoning bylaw, so the zoning from the subdivision freezes for seven years.
It's a zoning bylaw that, that applies to every zoning district?
Yes.
Okay.
So how many, I'm just trying to get my bearings right on this, how many floors are the residential units gonna be on?
This proposal just, it's on a single floor.
Oh, it's a single floor?
Yeah.
Okay. What was, what was the last thing that occupied that space?
It was a company called DNV, so originally Energy and Resource Solutions, which was then acquired by a European multinational who shrunk them out of their space and has consolidated to another smaller space in the buildings.
So this was a office-type use?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, these were, these were, when we first purchased the buildings, they were professional offices, and that original permit anticipated converting them to residential at the time. As Brian pointed out, we were phasing things in according to the bylaw at the time, that limited us to 10 units a year, and before we got to that phase, we had leased that under the same use at the time.
So, I mean, I would take it then, from the time that it was used, if it went back, if it, if we said no and just continued to use it as commercial, seems to me that would incur more trips, more parking than residential, correct?
Exactly, and that's why, in Gene's original comments, it's, it's actually a reduction in parking demand for the site in terms of total number of spaces.
Yeah, I mean, parking there is usually not, I mean, obviously, we haven't seen everything that comes along, but parking, I'm more worried about traffic on High Street than I worry about parking, but again, this is a reduction in trips, so, that's...
So would the access to the units be on the Water Street side or the other side?
Correct, we have a lobby at 120 Water Street.
Yeah.
Gene is pointing at the bridge there, that already, 19 of the residential units come off of that lobby, so this would use that same lobby.
Is there dedicated parking spots per unit?
There actually are, and that parking lot on the other side of the bridge, we do assign some to residential and some to shared, just to try to balance it out most conveniently, and some of those are assigned and shared.
Does that work?
It actually does. The, the, because we identify a single user on both sides, that communication can generally work out.
Okay. I'm gonna read the comment that came in. My name is Mario, and I've been living in Metta View condominium for the past 20 years. I received a notice in the mail two weeks ago regarding the above subject. I spoke earlier with Bonnie and Jeanne, both at the town of North Andover Town Hall, about my concern about having additional 12 residential units behind the Stachis Pizza, One High Street. As it is already a present, foot traffic has increased significantly along the main road in and out of Metta View condo that ends at the McDonald's and North Andover High School overpass. Students and other pedestrians coming from High Street cut through the pathway that leads to the main entrance, Exit Road, Metta View. Every morning, these students walk in the middle of the road and do not give way to vehicle traffic. They taunt the drivers, including myself, reasons I don't know. After work coming home, I see nothing but trash along the main entrance, Exit Road, paper cups empty, beer and soda cans, food wrappers, et cetera, and kids playing at times even after dark, creating disruptive noises. There is a building that has been recently erected and being finished for like 50 units residential, is congested already as it is. I just dislike the thought that it'll get worse, trash noise, even crime, once this building becomes occupied. None of you may care about that, since you may be living far from where these housing projects are being built. Maybe it'd be best if these housing projects were built in not already congested areas of North Andover. I ask and hope the members of the board not get permits to build additional residential units where these former commercial offices at one time existed. That includes the One High Street project, I hope for your kind consideration. Thank you from Mario. Okay, thank you, sir. Is there any one here that wants to make comment? I do not see, I see one, there's one additional person here, Kelly, just so you know, and then three members that appear, I think, from the applicant team. Okay, so that is our comments. Any other board questions or comments? Nope, okay. I mean, to me, it makes sense. Go ahead, Kelly.
I'm sorry, you took just one question on the inclusionary zoning, so...
Yeah.
So you, you're, you're aligned with the fact that they don't have to have the 10% inclusionary, I was...
Yeah, I don't like it, but, yeah, so basically, the rules are that if you do a subdivision, that that freezes zoning for eight years, and I was just trying to come to, that's usually, what you usually think of is that applies to that particular zoning district that applies, but when we did inclusionary, the inclusionary bylaw, we made it so that it applies to every district. So I, I don't like it, but I think he's, he's right, so I think it doesn't apply. I would love them to do an inclusionary unit there, even just one, that would be nice.
That would be my next question, just to see, even if they didn't have to, if there was any kind of appetite to do that.
So, I'll leave that to you guys. I think it might be a good thing if you can make that work, so, but it's nothing that we can condition, but I'd say, think about it. Okay, I mean, to me, it's, it's a good use of that, if, if, are you finding that the, is it a larger commercial space, that that's why it's not, the market's not good for it, or is it just that commercial in general is a little harder?
Commercial in general is a little harder right now, but especially the larger ones. So in some other cases where we've had larger tenants vacating, we've been splitting those up to smaller commercial even, to try to make those more attractive.
What's, how, I mean, it looks like, do you guys have a lot of vacancies right now for commercial?
Not too bad, we, we're tracking sort of the horizon as well, so, right now, I'd say more than we've had over the last 15 years, but still manageable, in the 10 to 15% range on the commercial side. It's more about tracking the larger tenants, and obviously, the, the use of the spaces is lighter themselves in almost every office space because of the working-from-home trend in general.
Okay, I mean, to me, it seems like it's a good use of it, you're not, the construction's easy because you're not changing anything, you're not going higher, you're not changing the look, and it's less, frankly, less people and less traffic going to be down there, and again, we're supportive of housing in this area, so, okay. So why don't we, we draft a decision for the next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll do that. Is there any outstanding comments or anything?
No.
No? Okay, we'll draft a decision for the next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we get a motion to approve the meeting minutes from March 7? All in favor? Kelly?
I can vote on these, right? I did watch the meeting and find the form.
Yeah.
Okay, aye.
Alyssa?
Yes.
Aye.
John, Peter?
Aye.
And I vote yes. This may be Alyssa's last meeting, so if so, it's been a pleasure, been great, and if not, then sorry and yay, at the same time, so, we shall see. All right, can we get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion made?
Second.
All in favor, Kelly?
Yeah.
Alyssa?
Yes.
John?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
And I vote yes. Is anything still open for drinking?